All these. Hey, everyone. I'm just giving Peter a minute to set up here and then we'll get, we'll get going. If I can figure out how this pen works. There we go. All right, my pen works, so we can start. I called to order the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, December twentieth of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two. This is our regular planning commission meeting. That we have, we have specially scheduled for the third week of the month rather than the typical fourth week of the month. So that everyone can enjoy their holidays. The. We have, we have on the line on via Zoom Nelson Gleyon and also a planning commission member Wilson Feasing. And here in the room with us in the third, third floor. Third floor conference room is Peter Ryan and, and I am Wayne Beeler. I am the chairman. First on the agenda is to accept the planning commission agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept? Oh. First, we need to. First, we need to amend the agenda. I can go over the Jerome will go over the amendments.
The amendments would be as follows. Item four should be identified. Item four is. Reading Housing Authority Oakbrook daycare. That should be identified as a preliminary slash final plan, uh, land development plan review. Item five is the Reading School District STEM School. Land Development Plan. That should be identified as a final land development plan review. Item number eleven, six twenty-five McKnight Street parking. Should be identified as a preliminary slash final land development plan. And item thirteen should include phase one Sony and Saldo amendments. Everything else is fine.
Okay, very good. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as a mention, as amended?
So move.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Actually, in consideration, you'll have to motion to amend the agenda and a motion to set the agenda.
Oh. Very good. Okay. Do I, do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
I was going to offer that motion. I'll do so, Mr. Chairman. This is Will.
Okay. Okay, so Peter and Will. Very good. And do I hear, and now do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So move.
Wait, we have to vote on, we vote on that first.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Will. All those in favor, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And now we'll go to. Go to all those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Okay, Nelson and Peter will take us the second. Okay, question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Now, after my little pause there, we have a, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is the Reading Housing Authority Oakbrook daycare land development plan. This is a preliminary final plan. For a development at one thousand one Scott Street. And I will hand it over to Jerome for the update.
Okay, thank you. This plan was reviewed by my office on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. This is a preliminary slash final land development plan. We have reviewed this plan previously. It was submitted, I believe, last month and reviewed last month. We provided the applicant with some directions in which most of the items have been taken care of. There are a few remaining items. Just a few with regards to site accessibility, driveways and off-street parking. They are all considered minor. The most significant of those, we feel that the, if possible, the solid waste dumpster location for trash recycling, if it can be. Reorientated, so it's not as close to the intersection as possible, although patent on that direction is one way. It's not going to impede the site distance. It's just a matter of it being back close to the intersection period. We have a few stormwater management requirements, which are also considered minor in nature. The, the applicant will be required to. Seek or get the. Confirmation from Public Works regarding the sanitary sewer flows for this site. They did provide an analysis. Or assessment report of the existing and proposed conditions. So that would be reviewed by the, by Public Works. And there will be a municipal improvements agreement required for this project as well as a stormwater management agreement. Having said all that, we've had reviews by the county planning commission. They have submitted plans to diverse county conservation district. So all in all, it's, it's in good shape and we would be recommending preliminary slash final plan approval, subject to these conditions. In the review letter dated December seventh.
Very good. Very good. Do you have any comments, Tim?
Yeah, yeah, with Jerome mentioned about the EDU narrative for the sanitary sewer requirements. And I have reviewed that and I'm in agreement with the analysis and the report. Public Works is satisfied with that. The only thing I would add to that and more or less a note, Dave Talarica to you. That it is close to one EDU. Anytime you exceed one EDU of additional flow, then you do need to. Prepare a planning module. So the next one that goes in, if it increases the use of sewer. You know, we're probably looking at doing a module because we'll have to take the narrative from this one and add it to that one. It's a twenty-five acre lot, so we, we, we view the whole thing as one lot. So anytime you exceed one EDU of increased, then we've got to. Officially add that into our Act five thirty-seven plan. Just a little note there, but we're, we're satisfied. So you're good with that. For stormwater management, I am in agreement with the response from the Hawk Valley letter as it stated. I have one other comment that I would add. We're not capturing a whole lot of the, of the new impervious area, which is. A little discouraging, but I think you can address that. And I don't know, Emily, are you controlling the plan? Could you, could you move over to the grading plan? Could you switch over to the grading plan?
Okay, it's, it's Brandon. Give me a second.
Oh, Brandy. Okay, thanks. Randy, I think, is that sheet number five?
Uh, sheet number three.
Three? Yeah, Randy, what I'm saying is you've got a, you've got a new parking area that's between the playground. And the dumpster area there that is uncontrolled and you've got it graded so that that whole impervious area is directed straight out to the street. And, and, and in addition to that, you've got a nice landscaped area that's going right along the edge of that, kind of like a buffer.
No, I see what you're saying. I can easily add something along there.
Well, I, what I would like to say is, is that the grading plan?
Sheet three is.
Yeah, you've got the nice row of trees. Could you direct, instead of having it. You know, directed into the, into the drive lane and out to the street, have it directed away from the.
I'm sorry, sheet four. It's sheet four.
It is sheet four. Okay, I was just looking at that one. Yeah, there you go. So there where you have those eleven spaces or whatever, if you could, instead of. Having it go straight through the paved area, have it go a little bit further into where the trees are, make that a landscaped area. And that way you could use that to treat for water quality.
Just like the filter strip.
Filter strip. Exactly. You've got a filter strip on the other side of the development there on the McClellan street side with the new parking over there. You're actually using the right of way for that, which we kind of discourage, but in this case, I, I think it's, we'll, we'll allow it.
Well, the reason I went digging up there, that whole corner in the upper part of the screen, it was abated. For, and it's contaminated soil and it's a cap. It's actually, it's a cap on top of that with a paving. So I couldn't, I couldn't really infiltrate anything in that corner. We have.
Yeah, I mean, even to use it like I'm saying, as a filter.
Yes.
To filter it's a water quality. That's the main thing is, the main thing we need here in the city is water quality filtration. I mean, groundwater is important, stream bank protection is important, but we're really trying to focus here on water quality. And so when you add new impervious, especially impervious where you're parking cars. It's best if you can have that runoff go into a, a landscaped area and, and, you know, use that as a BMP.
Yeah, that's what I think of focused along those trees.
Yeah, the dumpster is not part of it. I think your LOD is excluding that. Isn't that right?
Right, that's an existing. I'm not doing near at the point.
Yeah, you're not going to regrade that. Be nice too, if you could grade that, so it would, instead of flowing into the street, all that dumpster juice could go into the BMP as well, you know? But I understand that's not part of this project. Yeah, so it's basically just a matter of moving your grading, just slide it over and put the swale over in where the trees are and.
No problem. Okay.
Okay, did we get stormwater management fee on this one? I always ask that question. I couldn't find any.
Yes, I, I dropped that off. I hand delivered it to Public Works, Tim.
Okay, good. I have an email over to Deanna over there and she didn't get back to me. So thank you for letting me know that.
Okay.
That's all on my list.
Okay.
And just a quick question before I turn it over to. The applicant, did we receive? Lost estimates for the municipal improvements agreement or the initial submission?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, does the applicant have any, any comments?
Not at the moment, no. I looked through the comments. I mean, any questions, I can reach out to Jerome or the reviewers, but I'm okay with all the comments and I can take care of them.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from, anything from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, we will. Okay. With that, do I hear a motion to. To conditionally approve the preliminary final. Preliminary final development plan for the Reading Housing Authority Oakbrook daycare land development plan. At one thousand one Scott Street with the provision that all. All comments on the Hawk Valley Associates letter dated December seventeenth. Twenty twenty-two are satisfied, are met to the satisfaction of staff. Okay, Peter makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Nelson. Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Whoops. I can't count today. There we go. Very good. We, we have that and with just, just a few minor. Things, we'll be able to see work on this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the. Reading School District STEM High School at eight oh one North Ninth Street. And it turns out that the, we have people here from the district and. Here in the room with us. But before we turn it over to them, I will turn it over to Jerome for the update.
Sure. This plan was reviewed by my office on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is for the revised. Final land development plan submitted on behalf of the Reading School District. This plan was, as I mentioned, reviewed in the past. It is a two point four plus or minus acre site. It is. Located and bounded by Wall Street, Douglas Street, Windsor Street and or Ninth Street. The address that we've been informed is going, that's acceptable is. I believe nine seventeen, yes. And. We have identified some minor traffic issues that need to be resolved. The biggest, of course, being the Penn dot H O P. Will need to be acquired for the utility and if the utility improvements within that, within that stretch. There are some remainings, stormwater management. Issues that also need to be resolved. This is, I, I think we mentioned a few of these in the past and I think that you're able to work these out. It's my understanding that the. You, you can.
Talking about comments.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have other ones you want to go over?
Okay. The sanitary sewer system, as it, as we've mentioned with other projects, this will require a planning module. It's my understanding that that information has been submitted to the city of Reading and it's now being forwarded to the D E P.
Well, it hasn't been submitted to the D E P yet. Yeah, it's still, let me give you the update. Yeah, we had to get the planning modules from the school district, which we have. We did get a resolution. We actually had a resolution prior to getting those modules. And so we had to get another resolution. We got that last night. And the engineering for those modules, I expect to get that here this week. And then as soon as we do, then it's a matter of getting signatures and then back over to Stackhouse Spencer for compiling. They'll send in that to the D E P with the review fee in normal fashion. So I, it's just a matter of, I mean, we already know that it's approved because we went through this already. So it's just a matter of getting everything completed and over to Stackhouse Spencer.
It's also my understanding that the fire rescue department has reviewed this and they're, they're acceptable to it. I just wanted to put it on there one last time. Just to make sure that everyone's comfortable because it's a critical issue with this project. There will be a municipal improvements agreement. And a stormwater management. Management agreement for this project. The address is eight seventeen North Ninth Street, correct? And you said you want to mention. The applicant wanted to mention something about one of this, this stormwater management ones, and I would guess it's seven C.
Kind of, I guess for the most part, I, I don't think we have any issues. There's a couple minor planned things, obviously, now that we have a new address. New address on the plans instead of referring to it at its current existing address named some minor. PG sixty-four hats versus PG sixty-four for the asphalt ceiling. Some minor stuff there. So in regards to comments of stormwater, I know we had originally submitted a waiver request, stream bank erosion. And we resubmitted it, I think this mission. And I think seven A. Comment is it would be possible to re- propose roof drain rainwater after discharge proposed that might exceed that. I think out of all of the proposed roof water. Vanishing systems, there might be just the one that's on the south side of the building, which is currently proposed to exit that building. Head over to nine, North Ninth Street, tied to existing in Ninth Street. That may be the only one that we could potentially connect. The remainder of the proposed group connections actually go below and, and hit. Where the garage level is, which is. Oh, five feet lower than the bottom of our proposed base. So we could conceivably take a look at that. Our, our concern is we haven't done that count as far as how much of that roof actually. Being directed there, but it's still a possibility that we require that.
Tim, do you have anything further to say?
Yeah, this is the first I've heard that. Yeah, that was something similar to the Milmont Elementary School too. They have a subsurface parking and I think they used an ejector pump. Yeah, I, it, this might be a, a good occasion to meet and just discuss this. Because the way the ordinance is written, we have to ensure that all of the roof drains are. Are addressed by a BMP not connected directly to the municipal system, at least to the extent possible. And we need to, we need to understand that it's been engineered to the maximum extent possible to intercept those roof drains. So I, I think. Rest cities, it would be good if we, if I could see what you're talking about with the roof drains going into the basement and, you know, what you could do there before we. I think before we entertain a waiver, let's, let's make sure we've got everything to the maximum extent possible.
Okay, when you say BMP for roof water, is that for quality?
Mainly it's for quality. If, if you look, I don't know if you got, you weren't copied on my email. Roof what? No. No, no, if you, if you refer to the ordinance, I think it's five oh five. What is it? Let's see, it's under prohibitions. I don't have it at the tip of my fingers right now, but I can look it up for you. But it's.
I mean, that's something we can certainly coordinate on Tim. I didn't kind of show you what, what's feasible, what's not feasible and sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, rest cities are the whole, the whole section, five oh five, one eighty-three roof drains. There's a whole section in the ordinance that talks about it being connected to an infiltration BMP or, or any kind of BMP really. To the maximum extent practicable, use the word practicable. So we have to make sure that that is being done before we just go and entertain a waivers.
What was that section again? Sorry?
Five oh five, five oh five, one eighty-three. There's A and a B and a C in there. They all apply.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I can chat with Justin. Justin and I could probably give you a call and walk through it.
Yeah.
Maybe do a zoom call or whatever.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. As far as seven B, I think that was already provided. Seven C, obviously that ties into what we were just talking about, so we can, we can converse offline via Zoom on that.
They need to come back for a waiver. They could, but I think we were recommending final plan approval.
Yeah, it's, that's, I just wanted to ask.
We might, we did, we might come back for a technical. But. Adjustment.
Yeah, can we give a conditional approval and then have, and then they.
If we.
They can come back for a waiver. If we never had that before.
It's unusual. With. With a better, better way to do it, maybe to brand the waiver. If necessary.
Okay.
Yeah. This way, if there's no. Possible way that the. The applicant can comply with the section. Then the waiver will be granted.
That's the intent, right?
Yeah.
It's to say, we're going to do this, but we're going to try to. Tim, you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd be okay with that. I think we, we would just need to be able to. Explain why we've, you know, why the school district has achieved the maximum extent practicable. Practicable is, is a subjective word, so. We, we just need to know that it was attempted and it needs to be obvious that it's just not going to be practical to connect these roof drains. If, if that is the case, then I would be in favor of the waiver.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. It's. All right, so it's section five oh five. What was it? Eight oh three?
One, eight, three.
One, eight, three. And we can note that on the plan. We'll, we'll get the verage on the plan to, to clarify, to clarify that. Whatever the end result is.
So I know our original waiver request was section five fifteen dash one twenty-seven, so.
You know, Michelle, if they've in fact, if it's agreed that the applicant has. Has, has complied with five oh five, one eighty-three roof drain cell discharge to infiltration areas or vegetated BMPs. To the maximum extent practicable. If they have achieved that, they would need a waiver. Then they are, they are complying with it.
Yeah, my recommendation was a waiver if necessary.
Okay.
As determined by, as determined by you.
Yeah, I agree.
Cause actually, if it's under, if it's under stormwater, it's actually a modification, not a waiver.
You okay, Jerome?
I'm, I'm fine. I, I think this could be handled as a. I'm assuming we don't necessarily need to call it a modification, but it just could be completed to the satisfaction of, of the city of Reading engineer.
Okay. Very good. Then, let me see if I can put this all together. Do I hear a motion to allow, to allow for the modification of section five zero five dash one eight three? Of the, of the stormwater ordinance. Of the stormwater ordinance. If necessary. With the. With the provision that the. Reading School District needs to show that. The, that they have designed the modifications, have designed the drainage system.
To the satisfaction of the, of the city of Reading.
To the satisfaction of the city of Reading engineer.
I'll offer that motion.
Thank you, Will.
I was hoping you could conclude that.
I needed the help, definitely. Do I hear a second? Okay, thank you, Peter. Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, great. Sir, do you have any, anything else to?
No, everything else is addressed. We've already, well, I guess, do, do we have an update on the N P D S permit?
That, that's already received. I think we've recently, I think we got, Scott did you on the N P D S permit last question, so yeah.
Very good. And it is noted on the plan.
It is noted on the plan. Very good. Thank you. Then I have, I have no further comment.
And did we get the preliminary numbers for the municipal improvements agreement or are we not that far yet? Excellent. Are there any comments by the commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Will.
Okay, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Like I said at the last meeting, I really appreciated the district presentation, but we, those of us attending by the phone could hardly hear it. We got bits and pieces and knew it was comprehensive, so I received it in the meantime and studied it. I, I have a few questions and comments. Did we get any citation on the state statute about the buses when they're in a pull-off that they do not have to put out their stop sign and all that sort of thing? I don't know. I leave it in the judgment of the, the planning consultant and staff and public works, whether that needs to be noted on the plan. I know the district doesn't have its own buses. I'm only concerned there that perhaps drivers wouldn't know that if they're not in the cartway. I couldn't see from the, the rendering if there was a clear delineation between the cartway and the drop-off. That, that some, some drivers might not know that or out of habit, put the sign out and all that and, and hold up the traffic unnecessarily when, when they do not need to. not know that or out of habit, put the sign out and all that and, and hold up the traffic unnecessarily when, when they do not need to, when they're in a pull off as opposed to being in the cartway.
We will work with our two transportation providers to ensure that all drivers are properly trained on those measures.
Wayne, Wayne, that, that's a good question. How, how do you do it on the Citadel? There's a pull off there. When the buses pull off and they open the door and the sign comes out. Cars still have to stop.
Well, yeah, the Central Middle School, actually, Twelfth Street is closed to traffic barring arrival.
That's right.
I'm trying to think where else. But it's hard to remember the details, yeah.
Yeah, that is not our intention for, for this, for this new site.
Is, is the intention for the traffic to continue when the buses are, when the doors are open?
Uh, yes.
That is, that's a really good question, Will. I never thought of that.
Thank you, yeah.
I think I would be tempted to stop because the doors open at, that the, the lights are on and the, and the stop sign's out.
Well, that was what we were told when I asked this, it might have been one of the meetings you weren't, they would not have to put the stop sign out. Well, if we can just get clarity and whatever the staff, you, Public Works or planners recommend as to whether or not it needs to be something the statute cited at least noted on the plan. But I appreciate that, the comments by the, the, the school district about, you know, doing what they can do to instruct the, instruct the, the drivers.
Yes.
So I'll, I'll leave that every, in our staff discretion and, and, you know, as a technical detail. And we could go on to somebody else unless somebody has anything else on that. Um, but thank you. So the Barta bus stop, I see the sign is on the plan, the stop is being retained. I know Public Works was working with Barta, had reached out to them about possibly moving the, the stop closer to the intersection. Was there any update on that?
Yes, we did. We got, we got very detailed instructions, Will, from Barta on how to do that. I passed it along to Stackhouse Spencer, and like you noted, they, they put that on the plan. These are coming directly from Barta, so we're not going to argue with Barta.
Oh, great. Okay, so they, they are moving it closer?
Actually, it's almost, isn't it the same, Aristides? Almost the same?
It's, it's almost exactly where it needed to be, or their, or their guidelines. In fact, I think that was one of their comments, like here's, here's what we prefer, and they had that little diagram. And then, you know, we looked at it and said it's, it's pretty much right there, so we're not proposing to move it in any kind of permanent situation. The only hiccup might be, you know, during some of our curb removal, sidewalk replacement, there might be a need to have it temporarily relocated during some of the construction period or, you know. So that, that's something we can coordinate with Barta to make sure that we're not disrupting it more than they're tolerant of.
Yeah, very well, that's a good, that's a good point. I'm not sure what the protocol is for a construction, uh, uh, when there's a, you know, a bus stop and there's a access to it, but I'm, I'm sure they have, I'm sure they have a, a recommendation on, on, on what to do in that case, but, so thank you, that's good. We were hoping maybe we pick up some extra parking. Uh, not that it's critically needed there, uh, because the district is, uh, you know, generating a net increase in parking, but, um, and also really it's just easier for the buses to pull in closer to the intersection, we think. So, okay, that's good. The question about the, the kitchen. Is that all going, is that going to be for preparation of food or, or reheating only? And, and I, I'm inferring from the comment about the delivery of milk that there's not going to be food delivery there, that the food must be made on site. If somebody could clarify that?
Uh, the, the kitchen is designed to be, to prepare food onsite and/or warm up food depending on the situation at hand. As you know, right now, there is supply chain issues for certain types of food. We've had the change from prepared food to warm up meals at some locations, so it will be designed to accommodate both options if needed.
So it's flexible. So in other words, there won't be a delivery of a food truck every day to accommodate the school is the point then necessarily, unless, unless, as you, as you know, that circumstances change, uh, for, you know, a temporary basis, obviously. Okay. So that's good. It's, you know, that's about the traffic concern, so it's probably minimal. You just have your normal deliveries of supplies then, including the food. I noticed some classrooms are not going to have windows. I was all surprised at that. Um, just very briefly, I'm just going to summarize the pros and cons as I see them again, you know.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, but every class, every classroom will have windows.
Oh, okay. I saw some that are on the, on the inside of the hallway. It was hard to tell. Do they have windows? I didn't think there was like an interior courtyard in there.
There's an interior common space that has direct, uh, has windows to the, to the outside, so natural light will be provided to every classroom.
Oh, over the common space, that's what I was looking at in particular. So that, that, in other words, so they're sort of like skylights or something, or, or windows that, that what would you call that? Like a clear story? That are letting some, letting some light in, letting, letting some light into that. Basically a two-story space, in other words, and that's letting some natural light in. Okay, I was wondering that. It was hard to tell from the, from the drawing. And we didn't see an interior rendering. Okay, great. I was wondering that. Thank you. Very good. Uh, just very briefly on the pros and cons. Um, you know, under the subdivision land development ordinance, we're supposed to promote fair taxation, so that's why I made the, you know, the concern about taking the property off the tax roll, especially because we had seen a plan already for the development of the site. I think the best argument the district can make here. Um, well, one they mentioned was about, uh, it's closer to the high school, this site for extracurricular activities at the high school. But to clear up what I'm saying, we were told in one of the presentations that the students would be bused, but the the presentation at the last meeting says that they'll be walking. Just, is that, I understand plans change, they could be developed and, you know, plans change all the time. What, what is, what is the plan for the extracurricular? Are students going to be picked up and, and bused, or will they be walking, or some combination thereof?
Uh, it would be a combination of, of options. Majority of the students at the high school either walk or may have maybe dropped off with a personal vehicle. Some students utilize barter transportation and students that might be on the statutory obligation, distance for transportation are provided with school district transportation.
Go ahead, sorry.
Those same parameters would apply to this building?
You know, I understand. I'm talking about for extracurricular after school. What were, are some going to be busing or, or, we were told they'd be bused at some, and, and the last presentation, it says that they would be walking to the high school for extracurricular. That's what I'm asking about.
Yeah, it's our, it's our concept that the majority, the students would be walking to the high school for extracurriculars. Uh, there might be a situation where the extracurricular occurs out of sight other than the high school that may require transportation, but most of the, the activities would occur at the high school and they would be able to walk. Uh, obviously, maybe there might be some inclement weather issues that may require us to transport some of those students, but
Yeah.
The main goal would be for them to walk.
Yes, and of course, they'd be walking uphill. I mean, the idea was to encourage them. And we're trying to balance traffic, uh, you know, traffic concerns with pedestrian safety and all that, so I hope the district would, would accommodate the students so that they're not discouraged from participation. But I think the best argument the district can make is about, it isn't really about the proximity to to the density, because that could have been accommodated, accommodated in the ways I had suggested. It really is basically, I suppose, I don't think the district made this argument. It really is that students are more likely to attend if they don't have to go as far to get to school. If they can walk or have a short, a short ride, that's probably the best argument to be made here. So I, I'll make it for the district. Um, the arguments about improvements in lighting and sightlines, et cetera, on this site, well, again, those would have been obtained with the private development plan we had seen. Um, as I noted, the parking is the net benefit here, so that's one pro. Um, the traffic and argument here was made in the presentation again about there isn't any drop off currently at Reading High School. Uh, that's true, but as I noted, the street is wider there and it can accommodate double parking better. Obviously, having this school would reduce the congestion somewhat at the high school. Um, so that is a benefit. It's just spreading it out to a, a larger area. It was also brought up about traffic, that the outlets were heavily trafficked, but again, that was primarily on Saturdays. Not any other time. Uh, this would be twice a day, every day, so I appreciate, you know, the serious attention to providing the drop off zone and all that sort of thing. I really appreciate a number of things the district addressed of the concerns that were raised. One was, um, the regular thirty-minute opening of the school prior to the, um, opening of the building, prior to the, um, what do you call it? The arrival time, the start of the school day. And also during inclement weather, appreciate that. Um, originally the district was seeking setback variances. So I'm glad that those, that's not the case, or that the sidewalk is, it was expanded so that we don't have any blockages for walkability, which we're supposed to be promoting as well throughout the city. One of our main concerns. And also the incorporation of materials from the, uh, into the design of the old, uh, demolished factory building. I want to compliment the district on including a, 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 an emergency generator. This is the concern I raised when I last served on the board two thousand thirteen. Uh, that was ignored at the time. And I think it's essential, and especially that the district is accommodating the concern about noise for the neighborhood. When the city, very close to here, but the city proposed one for the fire station. Uh, I praised them for doing what's essential for a fire station. And it was right next to a residence, and I, I urged them to do what they can to muffle the sound. Uh, it's a challenge to do it because they're, you know, they're, they're manufactured guidelines on the position, but it seems like the district has found a location that works that'll minimize the noise pollution for the residents, especially considering it's a dense neighborhood. So I do appreciate that, because we want to encourage, encourage, uh, emergency generators. Um, but not something that's going to, you know, violate the noise ordinance or something like that. So all in all, I'm not thrilled with the, the concept or the location, but I really appreciate the district accommodating, addressing a number of the concerns. There are obviously a few technical details to be worked out, and I'm sure we'll, we'll consider a conditional approval, and then those can be resolved favorably. And, um, this was a major project, so it was, it was necessary. We took our time and, and thought through everything carefully. And that the district was, you know, answering our questions and, and, and trying to address things that, that need to be addressed. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Will. Uh, you have anything, Nelson? No? Okay, very good. Okay. Very good. Anything else, uh, concerning this plan? Very good. With that, we will, uh, I will entertain a motion for uh, for conditional uh, final plan approval. With the provision that all the, all the comments on the Hawk Valley Associates review letter of December nineteenth are, are met to the satisfaction of staff. And that the, and that the section five oh five dash one eight three of the stormwater ordinance is reviewed between the Redding School District and Public Works and meets, meets to, meets the satisfaction of, of Public Works. Uh, do I, uh, do I hear a motion?
A move.
Thank you. Peter and Nelson? Okay, I'll take Nelson as the second question on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you, Will. Sorry, a little fast there. Opposed? Okay, very good. Uh, we are unanimous. And I, I second Will's not sure of the word, but we do really appreciate the detail that you've gone through and, and worked through on, on this plan. And we, we know it's, it's, it's going to really come together and, and be a nice school. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Holidays.
Any news to you?
Aye.
Tim, Mr. Crow, I don't know if you're still on the line. Are you the one that, well, can you take a look at that estimate for the escrow?
I have it on my list to look at the cost estimate. I don't know that I could, I, I tried finding one. I couldn't find it, so if you could send that to me, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reset that, and then that way we can start finalizing the agreement as well.
That's a lot of good soup.
Yeah, okay. Thank you again.
Thank you. Hey. Uh, next on our list, we have uh, we have four twenty Walnut Street Annexation Plan, preliminary final application review of, um, properties from four sixteen to four twenty Walnut Streets. And I'll turn it over to Jerome for the update.
Yes, this plan was previously reviewed last month. Um, the plan that's, uh, has been revised substantially, and this new review is, has been issued December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Focus is going to be four sixteen, four eighteen, and four twenty, which the applicant has completed as part of this design. This involves three parcels of land, approximately five thousand two hundred and thirty square feet. And it will be the consolidation of, uh, a, the, the buildings and then applying adaptive reuse for eighteen residential apartments in those units or in those buildings. Uh, four seventeen and four nineteen are not part of this project, and that is noted on the plan. Uh, so that's where I wanted to make sure that we were, were clear on that. The applicant has provided the rebound, submitted this information as well on the plan. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, that's been accomplished.
Are they? Is my recollection correct that these were all one deed?
Yeah, that's coming next. The, uh, four sixteen, four eighteen, and four twenty will be consolidated by common deed and removed, and then re-described as part of a new deed description. And four seventeen and four nineteen will then be separated as part of its, its own deed. So those deeds will be drawn up by Dan and then recorded as such on the plan. It does specify that four seventeen, four nineteen will still require a plan as well as they go through the process.
Yeah, we need to ensure somehow that, because the plan will have to be released for recording of the deeds, and we need to ensure somehow that these deeds are reported.
Yeah, well, that's one of the ideas I thought I'd put on there, and Dan will, I, I know has put it on the past that uh, the, the note will be on the plan to indicate that there will be joint and common deed. And Dan will have to do is just indicate that the, the deed descriptions will be recorded with the approved plan.
We, we can do that. Usually you record the plan first so that you can put the recorded information on the, on the deed.
Yeah, what I, what I'm suggesting is that you just record the plan and you can wait a minute and then record the deeds after that.
Yeah, you can. It's just, we want to make sure because we've had issues in the city. This happened, the deeds were never reported, and this, we've had to deal with it down the road. Maybe we hold a small, if there's any escrow left, we hold some small escrow until we see those reported deeds.
Okay. Um, moving on with, with the review. As I mentioned, the adaptive reuse requirements were applied. As I mentioned, the adaptive reuse requirements were applied. Uh, we had some comments with regard to site accessibility and parking, which are reflected in the decision as well. For the zoning hearing board case, which was we'll say the zoning hearing board case, uh we had asked that the uh emergency accessibility uh to all levels of the site be evaluated by the fire and rescue department. Um, the existing curves and sidewalks in this segment are in port of air condition. And we're, we'll have Public Works to verify that, and if so, then they should be replaced as part of this project. The applicant has provided the landscaping plan uh with this project, as well as a lighting plant. Uh, the sanitary sewer uh information Dan has provided uh calculations to Public Works uh to uh evaluate existing and proposed conditions, and that that information will be reviewed by Public Works. Uh, just also, uh just made a note on here again, just to for fire and rescue to review this one last time. Make sure everything's in order, and I know that's been done in the past, but we just want to make sure that it's just completed one last time. Um, the proposed street for this project, uh for the street address, it's my understanding that four twenty Walnut Street will be selected. If so, then Public Works in conjunction with Burks time one one and the post master jurisdiction should uh agree to that change, or not the change, but just to want to at you to utilize just one address. Uh, there are some notes uh that was asked to be placed on the plans, certifications would need to be completed. There are no municipal improvements, and there are no stormwater management improvements. Does that add to that uh comment thirteen has been satisfied that I saw the
Oh, yeah.
I saw that in the file. And uh the um, and do we have a submission for the parking reservation?
He he has a uh the ability to get a long-term lease on on the um the parking spaces, so I'll have to have him get that agreement uh put together.
Yeah, great. Um, do you have anything, Tim?
Yeah, uh, we talked, uh, the comment was made here that we're going to be using four twenty. Um, Dan, has that been requested? Have you contacted uh Chris Lovell about the address change?
I was looking to see if I wrote a letter, and I I think I might have missed doing that, because either that or I didn't save it.
Well, it sounds like the right way to go, so as long as we get a letter or an email or something requesting it, then we'll get Chris started on it.
Send it to, send a a letter to Chris.
And copy me.
Okay.
These conditions are easily uh can easily be resolved. Uh, the biggest thing is the sanitary sewer. But the submission and narrative have already been submitted, yes.
And Dan, while you're at it, um, it might be a good idea to just to check those curves and sidewalk. I I think they're generally pretty good condition, I mean, relative to the rest of Reading, they're not bad. Um, it, I will make the comment, there is a handicap curb ramp there at the corner. Now, normally, when you're doing site work, we would throw that in, that you would need to do the curb ramp, but since there's no sidewalk improvements, no site work, and there already is an existing ramp, although it doesn't meet the current twenty ten standards, there is a curb ramp. So the only way, or the only reason now that I we would need to have a an updated curb ramp is if the city were paving that, and we would do it. Um, and that's not in the schedule for next year, or a- anytime in the near future. It is in the schedule, but not not in any defined schedule. Uh, the only other reason would be is if anyone at the apartments or anyone in the area would request it. And if it would, then that request would need to come through Public Works. And then we would look into modifying that curb, but that that applies not only to the curb at four twenty, the curb ramp at four twenty, but any other curb in the city. So if that makes sense, the curb ramp would stay as it is unless we received a complaint or or a grievance or any other request from, you know, a qualified uh applicant to change it.
I'll have to look at what that curb and sidewalk looked it looks like in there. The last time I was in, it didn't seem to be too bad. I think it all comes under uh Jerome's note that uh all this, you know, because there's going to be so much work that has to be done inside these buildings that I, unless these fi- minor little things outside are taken care of, that you don't get occupancy. So I I think you you have a pretty good leverage to have done what needs to be done.
Yeah, I did mention that the curbs and sidewalks were in port of fair condition, and maybe I was a little harsh on that, maybe just fair condition.
Yeah, and you have to look at two on Madison, on Madison Avenue.
Yeah, Madison, Madison.
Yeah, it it it's only eighteen inches, the right of way is only eighteen inches wide, so the other, the rest, the majority of the curb is actually on private property. So it would be a matter of just improving the onsite for mobility, for for access. I don't know how many people need to get through there, but the from the public work standpoint, you're only responsible for the curb and the eighteen inches beyond the curb. And generally, I don't know that that's too, that's too bad. I let Chris uh look at that, though.
Yeah. Fair conditions probably the problem.
Well, I think you what the last time I met with Chris is um, he had said that anything that doesn't is misaligned by a quarter of an inch needs to be repaired. So that that can get to, you know, you can get uh places that you you have problems and and it certainly you're going to be plowing a lot of money into these buildings, you might as well make it look nice uh to to cheap out on on some crappy sidewalk in the front. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, if that's the case, then you do have that, yeah.
Yeah, you're going to have some quarter inches there, yeah, and I agree, that's a, and that's and that's the tripping hazard, the trip and fall, so that's something to consider.
Correct the port, port of fair. Okay, um, but I don't think we're going to have any any further comments with this pla- with this project. Um, so therefore, if you do want to entertain uh preliminary slash final plan approval, subject to these conditions, you can do so.
Sure, I would just recommend that it a condition be added that a hundred dollars of any outstanding escrow be retained until the deeds are received. They're reported deeds received. A lot of jurisdictions require a separate escrow. We don't have that resolution in effect, but you can make that a condition.
Okay. So, sounds reasonable. Very good. Um, any um comments by the commissioners?
Yeah, this is, well, I just want to say I appreciate that uh our planning office is asking for long-term leases. Uh, I don't think, I think we just said leases in the past, and so I think I think that's prudent, so we've discussed this issue before, so I think that's uh, you know, definitely prudent, thank you.
Yeah, very good. Anything else? All right, with that, uh, do I hear a motion to uh conditionally approve the preliminary final land development plan for four twenty Walnut Street? Um, provided that the, that the all comments are met to the satisfaction of staff for the Hawk Valley Associates letter dated this, yeah, December fifteenth, twenty twenty. And the condition that a hundred dollars of escrow will will remain until the, until proof of uh the recording of deeds to to the uh to the city. Okay, Peter, second?
I'll take.
Thank you, Will. Question on the motion?
Yeah, uh, I, do we have to provide a hundred dollars or is there escrow, or is there money in the in in the funds already submitted?
Yeah, I'll need to check on whether there's any remaining escrow, and then I can get back to.
Okay, I I didn't quite hear hear your your condition there, so uh, yeah, let 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 me know, and and that that certainly sounds fair enough.
Yeah, we we're assuming there's a hundred bucks left, so.
Well, i- if not, I think he can get, he can find a hundred dollars to put in there, and uh we can get the plant plans recorded and and get legal descriptions done.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Everybody, have a Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good to the height we both.
Yeah, we, yeah, right. All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? Very good. We, we uh um, and and get this one moving, moving forward. Next one. Yes, Mar- yes, Merry Christmas, Dan. Do you have another one coming up?
I don't, I don't believe so. I I think I got two that need to be reauthorized. And both of those that need to be reauthorized, we need to get some kind of developers agreements uh so that we can get them finished. I'd like to get some of these things, they're they're dragging around and and not getting done, so uh uh, especially the the six, the sixth and Spring Street parking lot, that I I have a a uh estimate in for that and an agreement. Hopefully, we can get that thing built this spring for the gentleman.
Okay, great. Um, yeah. Um, I see, I see no problem with the reaffirmation, so uh if you would like to uh if if you would like to leave the meeting, Dan, um, you know, it's up to you.
I I think I will. I'll go home and get supper. My my wife is making Christmas presents, so I'll go home and help her.
Okay, very good. That sounds like a good plan, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, next on the list, we have the triple deuce car wash land uh preliminary fa- final plan application at fifteen twenty-seven North Fifth Street. And I'll get, I'll turn it over to Jerome for the update.
Uh, yes, this is a revised preliminary slash final land development plan. Um, this was required by the zoning hearing board as part of a uh zoning variance application uh that was submitted uh earlier this year or last year. Um, this plan was uh dated, uh, plan review is dated uh December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, there appears just to be uh one issue that was uh that needs to be resolved, and that was the location of the food truck itself. Uh, so it's either, we had recommended that it not be located within the uh the side uh the side yard setback. We received confirmation from that, from the zoning administrator, which indicated that it should not be located within the side yard setback. Um, everything else on the plan is apparently in good shape and ready to go. One thing I wanted to verify with Brandy was, did we have a review from the Burks County Planning Commission on this? Yeah, I I didn't see something in file, but we can double check. I did have it on it.
Fine. I can look more.
Yeah, we can look. Um, but that is the only issues that I have on there. Okay.
Very good. Um, Tim, do you have anything on this?
No, I think you've addressed everything.
Okay, very good. Uh, Joe?
Yes, um, I I'm here via Zoom. Um, Mr. Roland is is also present. Uh, the the food truck is at the location uh that it was when the the concept was presented to the zoning hearing board, and we're seeing this particular comment for the first time. It wasn't raised in the October review letter. This is the location where the food truck is, and the food truck is not a stationary object. Uh, it is a portable object, it's not a permanent structure, it's a it's a portable object intended to stay that way. It's at the safest location uh on the property, so as not to interfere with traffic, with parking, and with ingress and egress and line of sight. Uh, we would be willing to execute an agreement and plan note that there is no right to any object with a permanent and fixed location at that site. However, as far as for the food truck, which is not a permanent and fixed location, which is really the hallmark of what a of what a building is for purposes of the building setback line. Um, that this is, this is the location that was known to to the planning office, known to the zoning hearing board, and the comment should be uh marked, should be um satisfied with that location, with the plan note that uh Mr. Roland is willing to execute. Uh, the neighboring property owner also parks vehicles right, right up to the the property line. Uh, there is no, there would be no change to the the character of the area, uh, no uh eyesore as a result of this. But it simply is the best and safest location on the property, which was the directive uh of both the zoning hearing board and this commission in uh earlier correspondence.
How far is it not complying?
Doesn't comply at all, it's right on the property line.
What's the setback?
Ten feet. Um, in response to uh to Joan's comment is that uh, yes, this was uh submitted when uh another zoning administrator was in in play. Um, I never reviewed this plan. I did review it last time it was in, but I did not have the opportunity to review it as part of the zoning hearing board application. I do not know if the zoning hearing board looked at this specific issue. I had um I I had Tom, our zoning administrator, uh, review this issue. He went back and looked at the uh the transcript, I believe, as well as the uh decision, and it was his determination that it should comply with the setback requirement.
Yeah, I didn't read the actual uh transcript. Uh, I just read the the written decision. And I saw that there were three areas of the ordinance of, that they were seeking relief from. Uh, it was subsection eight eleven, uh eight eleven B, eight eleven C, and then uh eleven oh five F. So the dimensional would be subsection eight eleven A, which was not included. So as far as the zoning office is concerned, I I I'm not totally opposed to it being closer, but I don't want there to be any deemed right of putting a structure like, like um, like the attorney said, it's not a, it's not a mobile structure. And so the, it doesn't take a whole lot of creativity to think that a non-mobile structure could be translated to a deemed approval for a uh a permanent structure.
Well, actually, it is, it is a mobile structure, and and that that that's exactly on point, because it is a mobile structure, it's very much portable. It is a a food truck, but it's not just something where there there are wheels on there somewhere, like some of the um mobile homes that you see. This is a bona fide vehicle um that can be moved at at any time. Um, but again, we're willing to execute a plan note. If precedent is the is the concern or deemed or some sort of a deemed right or variance by stop as a concern. Uh, we're willing to to uh to take measures that uh that would prevent that. Uh, however, the location uh was one chosen to to meet the concerns of both the zoning hearing board, the prior zoning officer, uh, and and this mission.
Okay, would you be uh willing to get an agreement from the neighbor?
Okay, um, Mr. Roland, you could unmute yourself?
Um, yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say if you can get an 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 agreement from the neighbor, and that there's a a note on the plan that there's no deemed approval for a permanency. Um that uh the zoning would would look at that as as something that's acceptable.
Um, just just for the record, just for the record, um, the 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 person that you hear talking is Tom Napart, zoning administrator.
Yes.
Tom, have you issued a zoning permit for this?
Uh, not yet. I don't believe so. Ruth or the other zoning officers may have, but I have not seen one personally, so I can't vouch for that.
Is another, in addition to the plan notes, you can place a condition on the zoning permit? The additional note, the permit structure.
Yeah, zoning permit always follows, um. So, they, they should have a zoning permit, and I'll, I'll look on that tomorrow and make sure that that's issued, and it has the appropriate conditions on it.
Yeah, including the condition about the setback, and it should not be deemed for permanent structure.
Correct.
Yep, that, that would be fine with us.
I assume that, um, something that a neighbor could sign might say something like, there's no objection to the location of the food truck on this, um, uh, plan or site, site plan.
Not audible. Whoever's speaking, it's not audible.
Yeah, if you get closer to the microphone, maybe.
Um, basically, something that a neighbor could sign might just say that there's no objection to the location of the food truck on this plan?
That's correct. Just that there's be some sort of a neighbor consent. Um, and then, you know, that, one of the things we do in zoning is to alleviate any kind of conflict. And so, it's a little bit of a gray area, because it is a mobile thing, but, but Joan had said earlier that this thing doesn't, isn't going to be moved easily, or it's not moved. So that's part of the, the reasoning of why I was, um, looking for that ten foot, because one of the conditions of the zoning hearing board written decision was point E, in that the applicant shall comply with all pertinent provisions for the permitted commercial uses on the subject property, and one of those is a side setback. So, I just wanted to make sure, like, we, I don't want to rehash it, but basically, I don't want a deemed approval, so if you have a written agreement, you know, um, a thing on the plan that basically addresses that, and you have a neighbor consent form, and because it is mobile, we can look, look at that gray area and, and, and say that's fine.
And that we could also note that on the zoning permit, uh, that's issued.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, that would be fine with us.
Okay.
Joe, did you get BCPC comments? Have you seen any?
I, I have not, I have not seen BCPC comments. I know Greg, Greg is on here. Uh, Greg, have you seen any comments from BCPC?
No, I haven't seen any comments yet. We can follow up with that.
Yeah, if, if, if you could, please, um, because, um, as far as I know, we, we've cleared up our, our problem that we had a few months ago, so.
Yeah, I, I thought it was unusual, because it's, it's been, this plan's been in the pipeline for more than sixty days.
Right, and, and we didn't even receive anything saying that they weren't going to review it, so.
Well, the backtrack on that.
Alright, yeah, Greg and I will check.
Okay, any other, uh, any comments from the commissioners? I'm just curious, but is the intent to maintain this in a operable condition, meaning that it could be moved at any point in time, or is this what they described it as? The, the, the intent here is not to move it, but the question is, if you are going to move it, we'll be maintaining it in a movable condition. You know, it doesn't take long before the tires rot and, and it just doesn't move at all, but don't start the engine and the battery's dead. It's on block, water in the fuel, and who knows what.
I can, I can, I can answer that for you. This, um, this is, um, under a lease, and in the event that it would not be in proper condition, um, Mr. Roland would very likely terminate that lease, because it would then become derogatory to, to his property. Uh, this, uh, the, uh, the variance was granted for the second principal use for lease, for lease space. So that's one reason that while we hope that it succeeds at that location and doesn't have to be moved, that it, it could be easily moved if necessary and moved off the property. And, and again, it's, it would be a lease, and leases are subject to conditions such as, uh, keeping, keeping it in good order, not abandoning it, keeping it in working order. Is that, is that a correct statement, Mr. Roland?
Yes, that's correct.
Would, do you be agreeable to another condition on the zoning permit, that it should be maintained in an optimal condition at all times?
Uh, yes, that, that would be acceptable.
Tom, are you okay with that as well?
Yes, I'll, I'll put that on the, um, the, the permit as well.
Alright, that, that's fine.
Is that satisfied your comment?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any, anything else from the, uh, other commissioners?
Hey, Mr. John, this is, well, just follow on to, I think it was Commissioner Rice's question, which I thought was good. It, it looks like there's a few feet uh, on the north side where there would be ample room for maintenance of the vehicle, you know, to be performed without any encroachment. I mean, the reason for a setback for a permanent structure, it doesn't seem to apply here, those reasons, so, uh, for a, a mobile truck. So I have no problem with, with it being put there, with all the parties being in agreement. Um, I think it's important, like we said, that, that as it, it, it would be definitely parked right on the boundary line, although it doesn't seem to be a clear boundary there. Uh, but given that it, it looks like it's, uh, several feet south of that, as long as there's enough room there for, for maintenance to be performed without any encroachment onto the other, uh, neighbor's side, I don't think there should be any concern.
Yeah, I think it will be well maintained. To Mr. Roland's and the, and the food truck owner's best interest.
I, I think the only concern that the neighbor might have of it, it, um, is the maintenance of the fence, the, uh, the existing fence there. But I'll let you work, work that out, John, with, uh, Mr., Mr. Roland and the neighboring. Any other comments? Alright, um, because we have not received, uh, any, anything from, uh, First County Planning Commission, uh, we will have to table this, but this will also allow, um, all the parties to, um, to get, uh, get these few minor things settled, and then we, we can probably give approval. Um, we can probably give approval next month, so.
What, when is next month's meeting?
It's the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, yeah, our next regular meeting is January twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth, alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, do I, uh, do I hear a motion to table? Peter, a second?
A second.
Okay, little seconds. Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Um, and, uh, we, uh, we wish everyone a, um, happy holidays and, uh, look forward to seeing you next month, so, uh, that, uh, we could finish this.
Yes, yes, look hard to. I'm sure I'll have everything in advance. And Mr. Mr. Roland has, um, I guess, I, items eight and nine on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Same, John. Okay, great. Very good, then, um, we will move on to number eight on the agenda, the Burn Street Car Wash Lot Number One Subdivision and Land Development Plan. Uh, this is, uh, this is a final plan, and I'll turn it over to Jerome for the update.
Uh, yes, this is, um, lot one, which is the car wash, for the Burn Street Car Wash. Our reviews dated December sixteen. This plan was previously approved by the planning commission on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. So these are updated on, updates as far as the conditions that are remaining. The biggest thing that has occurred since, uh, the time we last met was that the, uh, church street has been vacated, uh, which runs between lots one and two on the, on the plan. Uh, the outfit has also made modifications and revisions to the stormwater management plan. Um, some of the bigger issues that we still are waiting on are the HOP, uh, from Penn Dot. And for lot one itself is, uh, I think we're going back and forth with the, uh, public works on the sanitary sewer flows. Uh, First County Conservation District, uh, would also have to review the adequacy of this plan. And there will be a municipal improvements agreement that's required, as well as a stormwater management agreement. I don't think you have to take any action on this plan, since it's been previously approved. Is this one of the ones that we have on our list for, uh, reaffirmation?
It isn't on this month, but it has been there for, uh, it's last.
Yeah, it's free from last month, then we're good until January, right, is what I believe. So there are no further iss, there are no further issues on this plan, um. I'm not sure if we have the, uh, the official action that was taken by council for the, uh, vacated street, but I mean, that's something that we're gonna add on the plan. Great. I don't have any other issues.
And the, uh, and the submission has been made to the Conservation District. It's my understanding it has. Is that correct, uh, Brett?
Yes.
Thank you, Brett.
Sure thing.
And, uh, and, uh, John, the joint access agreement. Is that, uh, is, is a draft been submitted for that?
Not as of yet. We, we'll prepare that.
Okay, great. Okay, um, do you have any comments, Tim?
Uh, just one, Greg. Uh, we, I see you've got the three, uh, filtration tanks and the sampling manhole. That's good. Uh, did we receive revised modules? Did we receive a module yet that's ready for review and, uh, uh, on our end, processing on our end? I'm, I'm looking through my list, and I think we are still waiting.
I don't think it has.
Yeah, I, we got one back in the spring, and then we, I think we finally resolved what, uh, what, what needed to happen. I guess it was some, some tweaking with the washwater. We, we were talking to the, uh, uh, supplier as far as how that was gonna work out, and you were gonna come up with a new narrative and some EDUs somewhere in the ten, maybe six to ten EDUs, which is fine. And then you were gonna submit those to us, so we can process it. So, and my, my, uh, checklist says we're still waiting. I, I, I just want to know if, if that agrees with yours.
Tim, I can check that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
There, we're still waiting for and, uh, so here. Uh, okay, uh, do any of the commissioners have any comments? Okay, carrying none. Um, we don't have to take action on this plan, um, since we did already, already approve it, and we are good until, um, until January. So, um, so we will move on to the Burn Street Storage Subdivision Land Development Plan. This is final plan review of, uh, lot number two at, um, seventeen oh four North Sixth Street. I'll turn it over to Jerome. Okay, uh, this plan is, uh, also dated December sixteen, twenty twenty-two. This plan was previously approved as well on, uh, July twenty-seventh. A lot of the issues still remain the same. Uh, we had asked that the, uh, references to Penn Dot be removed from the lot two plan. Um, we did have, uh, a meeting. It was, uh, myself, Greg, and the fire marshal with respects to uh, how this property would be treated in terms of um, size of the buildings, which would have to be sprinkled. And we just wanted to make sure that the applicant is understanding that if it is, then the service lines would have to be either replaced or added. And, um, it's, it's not like we can't do it, uh, the, the design that you have. We're just making sure that you're understanding that a service line would have to be added.
Um, I had a call with Jeremy Sirphos, as well as, um, my, my G C at, uh, Irish Creek Contracting, as well as an architect at Olson. Um, and he said the most recent thing he told us was, as long as we have, uh, firewalls and breaking spaces down by every twelve thousand square feet, uh, that we would not need to sprinkler the buildings.
Yeah. Jeremy Sirphos' original opinion, and we also had added the fire hydrant in the middle of the site to address his concerns.
Yeah, that, that has been done. Um, can we just get confirmation from Jeremy's, uh, some way or another? We can do it by email, that's fine. Do you just want to just, um, just repeat what you, you said in an email, then just have Jeremy confirm?
Sure.
Okay. I think, uh, all the other comments are very similar to the previous review as well. Very good.
Greg, I think I, did I send you the sample agreements? For the city. If not, I will send that to you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Or John.
And it looks like you're gonna do, yeah, you're gonna do it combined for the two lots. So if you want to mark them up and send them over to me to take a review of once they're prepared.
They have split cost estimates as well.
Okay.
Uh, do you have anything on this one, too?
Uh, no, that's all. We'll, um, we'll wait to see those cost estimates and the sample agreements and turn them around quickly.
Okay, great. And, uh, any, uh, comments from the commissioners? Very good. Um, we will, um, once again, we already approved this plan. Um, we reaffirmed it last month, and we are good until the January meeting. So, uh, this plan requires no action, but we do appreciate uh, the applicant and, uh, and, uh, Greg and, and Joan for being here to clear up a few issues. And, uh, we wish you a very, wish you a very happy holidays. And, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be looking forward to seeing you next month.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Thanks, dude.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good one.
Very good. Now, we are up to the Holy Trinity Church of God Land Development Plan. Final review plan for, for what is now fifteen forty-one Montgomery Street, but we will eventually change that address. Um, and I'll turn it over to Jerome for the update.
Yes, uh, this, uh, is the revised final, uh, land development plan review uh, for the Holy Trinity Church of God Land Development Plan. This review was, uh, issued on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the main components of the project still remain the same, six, six point four acre site. Uh, the, uh, there will be a sanctuary building, as well as a place of worship. Uh, congregation si, or size, or the, the design size, two hundred and seventy-five people. Also has additional or administrative center, as well as a rectory, which is gonna be utilizing the existing residential use. This plan previously had approval from the zoning hearing board, with a special exception in zoning variance. A couple of repeated comments that were on here is just in regards to the location and labeling of the, uh, the hundred-year flood plain, which we had asked that this be coordinated with the zoning administrator, since permits are issued through that all, through the zoning office. Um, and we just want to make sure that everyone's, is terminology is correct. I, I didn't see any problems with it, but.
I, I didn't see any problems with it, but. Uh. They can do that as part of the zoning permit. Application. Uh. The, uh. The main thing that's, that's left, uh, I think with this project is that a, uh. This will have to go through a street vacation. And I believe it's just Monroe Street would need to be vacated. Um, is that correct?
Um, it was determined at the meeting that was held with the city of Reading, um, a couple of weeks ago, that Mercer Street also needs to be vacated as he was only relocated in the past.
Okay, Monroe and Mercer Street.
Yeah, there's a little sec, when it, when it was vacated, it was partially vacated, so there was still a little remnant of Mercer Street and that runs along the north end. Monroe runs right through the middle of it. So there's two little, the, all of Monroe and Mercer, and these are paper streets, these, these are not developed streets, so it's basically just to. Remove it from the topographical plan as a full, uh, vacation.
Um, also, the applicant has initiated efforts to, uh, have. Sanitary Sewer Line reviewed by the Burn Township Municipal Authority, we've already provided comments, I believe. With respects to that, this particular issue, so. Um. Have we gotten anything back from the Burn Township Municipal Authority?
Um, comments have not been issued yet, we're still waiting for the review.
Uh, the Fire Marshal has reviewed this, uh, this project as well, um, and. We had asked us to verify that the, the locations of the fire hydrants that are located on the plan are acceptable.
At our previous meeting, yeah, he, he looked at the location of the fire hydrants at our previous meeting and he, uh, was, uh, in agreement with where, where we had proposed them. Uh, the only thing that we have to confirm with them is the size of the line as we're working with Rawa to get the water lines, um, prepared.
Okay, good, that was my understanding as well. Um, we did issue some, uh, stormwater management requirements. There was one added comment that's been, uh, included in here and I think that was the result. Of, uh, my office as well as Tim. With respects to a, uh. Stormwater management easement that needed to be coordinated with. The Burks County Parks Department. That coordination has already started, uh, Tim, do you wanna?
Yeah, just to add a little detail on that, yeah, it was also included on the Burks County Planning Commission Review, they, they also mentioned it on there. And, um, our old friend Dave Perez is now, uh, handling that from the county side and, and, uh. Is helping, uh, the, the applicant walk, walk through that, what they're doing is using an existing corrugated metal, uh, stormpipe, um. That we. Can't seem to find or, you know, an easement, an existing easement for that, it exists now. Uh, but there doesn't appear to be anything on record, at least we, that we can find, and, uh, that being the case and. Um, the county and the city are both saying that the, that, that an easement would need to be established, and as far as I know. And maybe, Eliot, you can give us an update on, uh, the progress on getting that easement.
Uh, we are still working on properly addressing that situation, we'll give you an update once we have, uh, made the, the communications with the county and, and decided, um, how we are gonna proceed.
Attorney Parrish called me yesterday to discuss this and make me aware of it preparation for tonight. And we would like, I think the county would like to see the easement. Prior to final. Execution reporting on the plan, it could be a condition. But when we get to that.
And, and Dave Perez was saying that, that they did not find an existing easement, at least not from their end? Is that, is that what you got, Michelle?
That was, yes, that was my indication, because I think there's something, and I clarified with him that they want a written. Recordable easement as well as on the plan.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Who, who's the? Good. Who's the easement to be in favor of? Because it's already an existing water course. And the applicant already has the rights to discharge water to that location.
Well. I'll let Michelle speak to that, but typically that's not the case, uh, what, what gives you, what gives the owner? Uh, the, the rights to discharge.
Because that's where the water already flows to.
Well, but it's, but it's a structure, it's a pipe.
It's a natural flow.
Yeah, it's not a natural, it's not a stream. That's been my understanding, I'm, I'm not the attorney, but that's been my understanding.
Yeah, it's, it's not mine, but we'll work through it.
One thing I forgot to mention also is that the applicant has shifted the, uh, site improvements. Uh, to the west from the property line as well as from the north. In order to provide the buffer yard that's, uh. With, is now been accepted, um, by the city as well, or not accepted by the city, but approved by the, the, uh. City Arborist. And, uh, I, I think we've made good strides on that location. The plan will require a, uh. Municipal improvements agreement as well as stormwater management maintenance agreement. Um. The applicant has submitted cost estimates. Uh, for the proposed municipal improvements for this project. And it looks like we still just have to do a few, few more issues and I think next month they might be. In a better position for approval. Correct, right, yeah, I, I personally wanna see something from Burn Township before we. We don't wanna step on their toes.
Also wanna get the hearing scheduled for the, uh, vacated street vacation.
Oh, yeah. Exactly, yeah. Uh, Tim, I have a quick question, uh, number seven on the review letter. Um. I just need clarification here. Even though. The sewer line is a Burn Township sewer line, it flows into our. It flows it into our treatment plant?
That is correct, yes, and, and there is an easement, because the property lies in Reading, it's the responsibility of the city. To, uh, manage all sewer flows within the boundaries of the municipality. Uh, e- even though this is a pipe, a facility, if you will, that's owned by the Burks, uh, for the Burn Township Municipal Authority. Um, it, it still is the responsibility of the city to address any planning, sewer planning that connects to it, so any of the flows from the church. And from the house, they connect to that would have to be addressed in the planning module. And that is something that, um, uh, Boje Engineering is working on right now. Uh, but, by the way, Eliot, did, did we receive the revised planning module? I, I, we, my, my notes only show we still have the one from the summer.
Uh, it was submitted, uh, I can give you exact date when it was provided, but, um, it was of, I believe, about. Ten days that we provide.
So, uh, that came from you?
Uh, that would come from Jan, from our office.
Oh, okay, uh, that's probably why.
She was the one who said that.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, all right, I found it, I got it. Yep, all right, very good, thank you.
Okay, and, um. So, any, uh, comments from the commissioners? Okay, hearing none, since, uh, we are, uh, we need, um. Some information from city council. And. Um, some information from Burn, Burn Township, we will have to, uh, table this. So do, do I hear a motion to table?
So move.
Nelson, as a second? More time. Question on the motion? Okay. Just wanna confirm. Here, there's, there is question on the motion, we need to make sure that we don't need to. Um. Uh, ask for an extension. Right, the, the extension is required.
It's close.
Could we get a time extension on this project, please?
Um, yes, we submitted a sixty day time extension, um, last month.
Okay. I didn't, did we take, we did, we did not take action on there, like. See.
Hey, Wayne, why they're looking at, uh, the time extension? With the, the sewer, I just would wanna bring to your attention that when the sewer easement came through this property. That there was already two dedicated tie-in locations with township. So I, I feel quite confident that the tie-ins will work with Burn Township. Moving forward.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, yeah, I, it's more of a cour- courtesy thing. That, uh, that we have to wait for them. I don't seem to, I'll see. Yeah, I don't have. Having watched. For the last month here. It's just, that is.
People last.
Can we please get a ninety day time extension on this?
Double check, when exactly was sent by, from our office, from Jan?
Okay, okay. Uh, you can, you can email that right now to, uh. To Brandon. And we can come back to you. So as soon as, soon as we'll, we get that, we'll, we'll take a vote on that, um. So, um. With that, um, all those in favor of table, tabling this plan, please say aye.
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 Okay, those? Very good, and then as, as I said, that, uh, that request, as soon as we receive, receive the email, uh, we'll, we'll vote on that, we're here for a little while yet, so. There's, there's no, there's no rush.
Come back.
I know, I don't have. Okay, uh, next on, next we have, um, six twenty-five McKnight Street Parking Land Development Plan, this preliminary final plan at six twenty-five McKnight Street. And I'll turn it over to Jerome for the update. Thank you, um, this is a revised preliminary slash final, uh, land development plan for a parking facility. At this location, it was previously identified as. Six forty-one McKnight Street, but now it is six twenty-five McKnight Street. Um, the pro- the project, uh, will accommodate eighty-two, uh, off-street parking spaces. Um, as I mentioned, the plan was revised. It has, uh, also been submitted to the, uh. Zoning Hearing Board for consideration for, uh, zoning variance application. Um, it's my understanding that the case has been heard. Um, and the decision is yet to be rendered. Um. We have provided the, uh, technical review for the, uh, uh. For site accessibility, uh, as well as parking on this plan, and I know that there's gonna be a waiver request. Submitted for, uh, not the site distance, but for those. Clear site triangle that's been added to the, the list of requirements, so that's something we need to cut back. And visit. Uh, the applicant has also submitted a stormwater, a revised stormwater management plan, which there's only a few technical items left. Um, there is no planning module required for this site. There will be a municipal improvements agreement and a stormwater management maintenance agreement required. Um. And we. All the other items I think we previously discussed. At one time, I think there's, uh, representatives from the applicant here or in attendance on Zoom.
Yes, Jerome, Chris Flankie with McCarthy Engineering, I'm here tonight.
Did you have anything else to add to that, Chris?
Certainly, um, we have, uh, three waiver requests, uh, asking, you know, for consideration of planning commission, one, obviously, Jerome, you had mentioned the site triangle. The plan that you have before you, uh, this evening, you see the, the seventy-five foot clear site triangle. Uh, we also do show on the plan, the Penn dot, uh, ten-foot setback, uh, triangle also to show the difference in the two. That we, um. If you use the Penn dot version of this site triangle, it doesn't have any effect on the parking issued on the site, whereas the. If you look at the dri- uh, driveway access itself, so the parking lot, it appears to do. But most like, in most cases, like, clear side triangles are based for streets. Uh, this is a driveway, it's, it's a parking lot, it's not really a street per se, so in every case, anyone exiting this parking lot. Will come to a complete stop usually before they cross that sidewalk. And then, you know, inch out into the street.
Yeah, Chris, yeah, you don't, you don't need a seventy-five foot clear site triangle for a driveway, you do, if it were a street, like you said. There's a, there is another zoning ordinance and Tom, maybe you, maybe you've read it. Uh, it's, it's in there, uh, but they're much smaller, they're just tiny triangles there, up, up near the sidewalk. Uh, that really. Uh, maybe you can speak a little bit more on that, I, I haven't read it in a while.
We've also are, are. Have proposed zoning amendments and SADO amendments. Which are going to. Um, be. More relevant to an urban setting, um, so those are. Will be reviewed by the planning commission next month. Um, but if there, if a waiver is to be required, we would certainly. Support it. For this.
So, yeah, if, if in doubt, that's why I submitted that, because I didn't know where the planning commission was going, because it's, it's comment number six A. And I just didn't know where that was heading, like I said, we have, we showed both on the plan. Uh, we just didn't know which way the planning commission wanted to go, so that's why I actually submitted the waiver request on that.
So we would, that, we would support the waiver request, since it's gonna be consistent. With the proposed amendments that were gonna be.
Yeah, and I'm gonna guess you probably won't need it for the clear side triangle, but, uh, if, if you want, Chris, you can send me an email and we'll work with Tom on that, it's in the zoning ordinance. But the, the triangles are much smaller, I, I know, I'm gonna guess you're, you're gonna be able to meet that.
Okay, we can take a look at that, I know you can't take action on, on this plan tonight because of the zoning, we feel confident we'll get, uh, zoning relief that we've asked for. Uh, obviously, you don't have the decision yet, so we can't take action, although I wanna try to get all through these issues this evening so that in your next submission, your next plan. Uh, in January, we could be in a position for approval on the project. Um. The other waiver item I, I wanted to talk about this evening is your, uh, comment number seven, uh, D. About the, um, improvement agreement, this is a. The, the Reading Parking Authority is an authority itself, so they have. They have r- rules and regulations they need to follow themselves to meet, so they're not gonna cut corners, obviously. So that's why we, we're hoping that we can get a, a waiver of improvements escrow for this project. Uh, because we are, we have to have, obviously, build a safe parking lot and we will, you know, the authority has got its wherewithal to, to do that. Um. So that's why we had asked for that, uh, waiver request also.
Uh, we have several projects that were recently approved, um, that are somewhat similar, Habitat for Humanity. Is one, um. Hope Rescue Mission.
Reading Housing Authority is just the force tonight.
Reading Station, um.
The Housing Authority is a good example.
Let's see, uh.
And also, this body does not have the authority to waive. The escrow that has to come from city council.
Reading School District. And we mentioned Reading Housing Authority as well. All, all those projects have done municipal improvements, great.
Okay, so what you're saying tonight, though, then, that we'd have to approach council for that particular waiver.
Yes, and. Based on the history, I would, this commission could issue a recommendation either way, and I would recommend this body not recommend that.
Well, that's what it needs, I'm, I just wanna follow up to make sure we get everything covered, because obviously, if, if we have to do the escrow, we have to obviously do a cost estimate we haven't done for this project. All right. And then the, the third waiver that we're looking for, and, and I can talk with Tim on, on the details. This has to do with the stormwater, the two-to-one ratio. We, we've got, we've made as much grass in pervious areas on the property that we can do based on the configuration of this property. We've made the stone trenches as deep as we feel comfortable with. And, and we've reduced the runoff as best as we can, as, as, as and we're, we're very close. We're just not exactly there. So I am asking for consideration. And I all work with Tim to, to make it as best as we can, but we are very close. I, I've tried many different ways, Tim, right now, struggled at it. I really can't get it down anymore without now taking parking spaces around, away. We're doing our best we can.
Yeah, and, and I think, and I, I expressed this to Jerome and the review team, is that I, I'm going to take the, the same approach that I did earlier in the, in the agenda here. We were talking about roof drains. And that applied to section five oh five one eighty-three. And although this is not a roof, it really behaves the same way. In fact, more so, since you've got cars. But, but the same thing is that you, you make the, the most practicable attempt to, to connect to your BMP and you're doing that. And I think, I think if, if, and I got to review this with our team. If, if what you're saying is true, and it appears that you have done that, then I think you probably have met the requirements, perhaps even without a waiver, because you've met the requirement, assuming it, the roof drain being analogous to or similar to the surface parking lot, that you've, you've made the maximum extent practicable to infiltrate or to direct toward a vegetative BMP. I think we can just approve it based on that. But again, I want to, I want to hear back from Jerome and his team that that is the case. The, the fact that you've made that statement tonight helps with this, you know, application to five oh five one eighty-three.
Good. I, I'm glad to hear that, Tim, because I said we've, we're struggling at it. We're trying to do the best we can.
Yeah, I like it. I like what you've done there. That, that's the right way to, to do a parking lot like this. Yeah, like to see more of that.
We, we support those two waivers for the site triangle as well as the stormwater management portion of this. The one we don't support is the municipal improvement screen.
If I could speak for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Nathan Matts, hey, we, we really appreciate the help here and you guys really understanding and supporting, you know, our initiative to provide parking all over the city. And I'm, I'm sure we can, we can agree to the improvement agreement.
You want to take the waivers one at a time?
You heard it from the boss. So yes, if you would do that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, the, the way, the first waiver request is under section five fifteen five oh two F seven. And that's clear-site tryings. Here we go. And so just for clarification, the provisions that are within the zoning ordinance, they're now going to get bounced to the SADO. So that's why I didn't want to confuse the two together, because one would require a variance. And then this one requires a, a waiver. So we're going to be eliminating the, the zoning provisions for clear-site tryings.
Understood. And, and I doubt that they'll need either one, but go ahead.
Okay, um, does uh, do, do the commission members understand the waiver?
And that section of the ordinance does specify seventy-five-foot clear-site triangle. That's whether we're requesting the waiver.
Explain that to me.
So a seventy-five-foot clear-site triangle is taking it seventy-five feet from the center line of the road into the property. That's, that's the key thing that's going to be the, the critical component. And then at that same point, seventy-five feet in each direction along the center line of the street, connecting the, the those points, which then establish the clear-site triangle. You could see it on this plan.
Do I see?
So that's, that's how it's drawn in in an urban environment. It takes up a lot of land and a lot of building area. So it really does not work in an urban environment. So the zoning amendments and the SADO amendments that we're going to be proposing are less, when he comes back from the street, similar to what you're seeing shown as Chris had mentioned, then he comes back ten feet. Depending on the functional classification of the road, it may change your bearing. But we'll, we'll discuss that further, but I think in this instance, it justifies a waiver.
Do I hear, do I hear a motion to approve the waiver?
Don't move.
Okay. I'll take Nelson first, so.
Thank you.
Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those? Okay, very good. Next, next waiver would be under section five oh five dash one twenty-seven A. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that is with regards to the stormwater management requirements for stream bank erosion requirements. Okay, do I hear, do I hear a motion to approve this waiver? I'll make the motion.
I have a question. Is it, do, in light of the comments by Public Works, is it really, is it necessary? Or should we do it just to cover it?
I think it's a formality. It, it's a formality.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'm thinking it.
Okay, thank you. Well. Okay, question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and then for the third one, we, the waiver for municipal improvements agreement has, that you buy the applicant has been withdrawn. Okay, great. Yeah.
Thank, thank you very much for the commission for that. I would like to have just a discussion on just some of the other comments, just to get an understanding of what you're actually looking for. In section comment number six in B, C, and D, you, you talk about moving and readjusting the, the guide rail that we have. And in the previous review, it talked about the guide rail being too close to the, to the walls and so forth. And yes, we have redressed that. And what we want to do is keep the cars as far away from these walls as possible. That is why we have three and a half inches is where we want this guide rail. Basically, that guide rail will be right up against the pavement, so that there's plenty of room between the edge of the car and, and the, and the retaining walls. And, but yet another comment says in, in here that you want two feet. So now you're getting the cars technically closer to the wall. So a little contradictory on some of those comments. And I, and I straw, and again, there's no sections quoted here. But I'm, I'm strongly trying to keep these cars away from these walls as much as possible. And I would rather have these guide rails right up against, you know, the, the academy. I'm not sure where these comments generated from.
Chris, let's discuss that with Jim Demerlane.
Okay. We can do that. All right. Then you also talk about later on. So you said staff wants to look at this wall. I mean, we have no problem with you guys looking at the wall. But we did do a structural evaluation on this walls. That's why we're confident they'll work with this separation distance that we've already built into the project. We are actually repairing the walls. The details call for repair and also capping the walls. So we are going to do improvements to them, of course. And that is on the plan details.
Let me clarify that. The planning commission had requested Public Works to evaluate the structural integrity of the wall.
So I'm not sure what, where, what our involvement is on that. But I can say that we had our structural people evaluate this wall. That's why we're proposing this project.
Yeah, my recollection was that, at, at the last meeting was that we wanted the applicant or the consultant for the applicant to, to do a structural evaluation, which Chris Falanke is talking about, which sounds like that was done. I, I don't know that I've read that. It, Chris, did you submit that? Was that provided?
Yes, it was. And actually, we have notes on the plan accordingly to certify into the walls. They've added notes to the plans too.
I can just review that then. As, as long as it's being certified by, you know, an engineer, then I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, that, that was the question from last month. I, I'm the one who brought that up, because the detail about the capping on the original submission didn't, didn't say that the uh, that's the north wall needed to be repaired. But if that, if that's been updated, if that has been updated and, and certified, then, you know, I have no problem.
Okay, very good. So I'll get, I'll get Tim to report. And they can say the certifications are on the plan, you know, noting that too. So we, and we can, we can seal that, of course. All right, very good. Uh, other question, I'm not sure who made the comment, but the, I can't, uncomment number six F. Honestly, I looked high and low. I can't find a ten and a half percent slope. So we, we need to discuss it, whoever made that comment, as to where that might be. So I can make, make the, I agree, we can't be, you know, that kind of steepness in the driveway, but I can't find it anywhere on this plan. So I'll gladly talk to whoever's necessary to resolve that comment.
Yeah, the only ten and a half I see is the whip. I'll, I'll check with Jim.
Okay, thank you. And just, and this to observation, I guess, comment number seven C. Yes, we have the EV charging stations in, in there and signage in the storm bed. But that's where they need to be in order to, to properly, you know, service these parking spaces. So I don't see a, a, a problem with it, only because this is an infiltration bed. It's not a rubber line scenario where we, we want the water to infiltrate. So we're not seeing any real impact with that. So that's just a, an observation there based on that comment. And also, we did get county conservation district approval just recently. So I'll support, support you, you know, show you those documents. Everything else is just notes and comments. And a clarification on comment number five. Is there like a draft kind of agreement or something that you're looking for? I'm not sure what to do with this one. You know, you, Reading Park is right, does own the property. That's why we're here developing it. But I'm not sure what comment number five is alluding to regarding terms and condition, things like that.
Let me check with the zoning administrator on that one. I'll have to get back to you on that, Chris.
I, I appreciate it. Like I said, if we, we're hoping with the zoning approval, obviously, and, and addressing these few items left here with staff, we can resubmit back for your January meeting and be here for, for approval. We'll obviously get the cost estimate in, so that can be reviewed. And we're got these small details. I don't, I don't have anything else to talk about tonight unless Nathan or their commission has any other questions.
We're going to get a time extension on this project, I believe, as well.
So you're looking for an email from me? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Sorry, the, the month got cut short by a week, so we usually have this all ironed out. Can you send us the ninety day?
I'm going to send you an email right now. Mute myself.
Chris, what I, looking at comment five again, and it is regarding pretty much the ownership maintenance and of the stormwater management facility. That all gets tied into the stormwater management agreement. The stormwater management maintenance agreement. So you can remove comment five. Okay, and do, do, do the commissioners have any comments on this plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, you know, kudos to Nathan and the parking authority. You know, we need more projects like this in the hood. You know, as you know, you know, parking, especially in the hood, is a nightmare. So, and I know the area very well, you know. I'm glad that this place is moving along. One is going to provide, you know, good parking for the hood, and it's going to be more lighting, you know, better lighting, which is, you know, always good. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nelson. And okay, and then while we're, well, there it is.
I hope you got it now.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, so we will. So we will, we will take a vote on that a little bit later on. The, because we have another one to do, but I'm sure, I'm sure it will be, we will be approved. We've only, in the seventeen years I've been on the planning commission, we've all, we've only uh, not uh, given a time extension to one project, and that's because it was on the books for almost three years. So. So we do really appreciate the work that, that is being done. I did see that Nathan, that uh, let me see here. This is the right one. It should be. That you have another project coming up?
Oh, we, we're probably working on twenty-plus projects right now, so.
Oh, okay, great.
Oh, definitely.
In, in answer to in answer to the information on uh, Ninth Street that we were talking about, I will send, I will send you a letter over the um, over the Christmas break, so that we can discuss some of, some of those items. For example, like that's nineteen green, I believe. For example, one of the things that you're familiar with is that all those sidewalks will have to be replaced. And there's a few other things that, that we know from the site, because we had a land development plan on that corner property a number of years ago that we denied.
Okay.
So there is some information that, that, you know, I can, I can give to you about that of, of what we know about that corner.
Yeah, I mean, any, any information you have would definitely be helpful. You know, in evaluating that site and clearly on McKnight Street, we're planning on removing all the sidewalks and curbing and, you know, redoing it all. Because most, most of these projects we're looking at on Tenth Street, Culvert, Spring Garden, Elm Street, all of them, the sidewalks are in complete disrepair. Poor, somebody used the word poor earlier. Poor, poor is a poor word to describe how poor some of these sidewalks are. So yeah, we will be tearing them all out. So, yeah, we will be tearing them all out for sure.
Um, and just, um, uh, for Culvert Street, be aware that Culvert Street's named that because there's a culvert underneath that street. There might be special engineering for, for that might be required. Uh, but that's for public works to determine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we were evaluating the former Reading, what was it? The southeast Reading Pool. I mean, that project was a nightmare of nightmares when it came to some of these things. So thankfully, we're not tackling that one right now. We're, um, going, moving to Cotton Street, and that was presented last night at city council. So, yeah, we, we have a lot of things we're working on. We keep Chris and McCarthy and our traffic engineers very, very busy. So.
I, I will say one thing. I, I was looking forward to doing that pool though, Nathan. I, I was, that was a challenge I wanted to tackle. So.
Yeah, a challenge, a challenge with a million dollar price tag for sixty-three spaces just didn't make sense. So.
Well, Nathan, while we're talking other site, you mentioned the tenth street, tenth and Marion. And, uh, Tom and I, Tom, Tom Neff and I have been kicking around an, on alternative idea where you can keep your nine spaces. Uh, we're thinking about doing something similar to what's happening just a block away over at the new Ninth and Marion Fire Station. And they've got angled parking. It's, it's not ninety degree parking. It's angled parking. And instead of making this off-street parking, make this street parking. We're thinking about, consider this, Chris, pull the, pull those spaces forward. Put the sidewalk behind the spaces. So people are going to walk around your parking spaces now. This is how we're doing it at the fire station. That way you keep your nine spaces. It's safe for the pedestrians and it works. So, uh, I'll send you what we're doing for the, for the fire station. Uh, and I checked with the fire chief and they're really happy. It's not in yet. It's, it's almost another month or two and it'll be there. Uh, but they're pretty happy about that kind of parking arrangement. I'll send you that tomorrow.
I appreciate it. You're always looking at alternatives. I mean, we have a lot of challenges with, with Nathan. He finds these lots and try to solve it best we can. Any input we have is great. Yeah. I have, I have, I have Anderson from my office and she does a lot of, of work for me now for Nathan's, uh, parking spaces. So, uh, so she's, she's getting really good, you know, knowing what, how people walk around town. So.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the buffer problem too. And, and all of that, it sets back from the building.
Yep.
That's a really good idea. And it gives Chris more work. Now he's got to redo the whole design.
Yep.
Way to go, Tim.
Thank you, Tom. You're welcome. Keep them coming.
Yeah, no, and, uh, I, I really appreciate the, uh, the cooperation, um, now because some previous getting cooperation from the parking authority has been difficult at times.
Well, or, yeah, we, we definitely like working with everybody we can. You know, earlier the school district presented the STEM school and we, we worked with them very recently on their project and, you know, advising them and working with them and trying to minimize the parking situation and the total impact on all the residents up there. And we're still working jointly on that project and hopefully we'll have something eventually that will become public up there. So we're, we're definitely working the best we can with everybody.
Very good. As I said, we'll, we'll, uh, do the waiver a little bit later. Um, we do need to table this plan. So, uh, do, uh, because we're waiting for a zoning hearing board decision, uh, do I hear a motion to table?
I'm with the table, the, the plan.
Okay, I'll take Will first and I'll take Peter second.
I, I can't hear the other.
Uh, question on the motion? All those in favor, please stay on.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Very good. We, we hope to see everyone after the holidays. Uh, happy holidays, everyone. Uh, thanks again for all your hard work on, on this. This is, uh, as Nelson mentioned, this is something that really the, the, uh, the, uh, the city needs and had, was proposed, I think twenty years ago, but the Reading Parking Authority never really did anything about it. So, um, you know, this is, I, this is fantastic.
And Chris, I'll send you sample agreements.
Before they go, I just wanted, I wanted to comment on something. I wanted to wait after we finished the, uh, the plan. Um, the site triangles were brought up, uh, which the applicant is the parking authority. I want to take the opportunity to point out, it's, it's come up in a number of times in previous meetings that the illegal parking in the, you know, closer to the intersection is really rampant in the city, especially at nighttime. People were even parking in the crosswalk. So, well, we, well, we're gonna be considering, um, an amendment to the zoning on that. The component there has to be is the enforcement of, I realize the parking is short, so we're trying to address, you know, the, the, the supply side of it, but I mean, the enforcement is, it doesn't seem to be, uh, you know, it's not apparent. So I just had to make that comment and maybe we, it's one component, one component of the whole picture, you know?
In my neighborhood, it's apparent. Uh, people, people who park too close to the intersection are getting a hundred dollar tickets.
Well, that's good to hear. I, I, it, it's challenging to be, I sometimes have to take a leap of faith to, you know, go into intersection because we can't see the upcoming traffic, especially with nowadays, as I pointed out before, with the vehicles being higher, you know? What your utility vehicles, minivans and the like, it's, it's really challenging.
Yeah, I'm sure Nathan wishes he had more people to ticket, uh, these type of people.
Yeah, you know, we, we balance public safety, um, and the lack of parking all the time. And it's, it's, unfortunately, it's very dangerous to do. One, one thing I would suggest, you know, we, we have now started this year, um, twenty-four seven dispatching. And, you know, I want to make sure I give that phone number to you guys. Um, that phone number is four eight four three three nine four nine seven nine, again, four eight four three three nine four nine seven nine. So if you ever come across something, you know, we're twenty-four seven now with enforcement. Clearly in the evening, we're, we have a more of a skeleton crew, but we respond to all complaints. And, you know, we appreciate people calling in and, and making the complaints and bringing them to our attention.
Very good. We, we really appreciate that, man.
Chris, I'll send you the sample agreements. You'll be very clear with them.
Good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I have actually, uh, two other plans, sixteen E and F on your uh, reaffirmation. Do I need to stay on for that? Uh, there was some confusion originally, but I do want to reaffirm those plans. I actually talked to my client and suggested it's best to have them reaffirm. So, um, just want to make sure if I need to be on or not.
Oh, no. No, re, reaffirmations, we, that's another thing, uh, that, uh, that's never, never a problem. Um, so now we, uh, uh, we want you to enjoy your, uh, getting ready for, uh, getting ready for the holiday season.
I, I appreciate that. I have one more meeting to go to. So, very good. Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and happy holidays. And that is all of our, that's all, all of our reviews. Next on the plan, uh, next on the agenda is the Reading Area Water Authority Grant Letter of Consistency. And, um, we actually asked one from the fire department to come, but I guess they, they weren't, weren't able to make it. Tim, do you know any details about this? That you might be able to shed some light on this?
I'm reading it and, uh, I'm not, i- is there any more details on it? I might.
Um, for any.
Yeah, beyond, beyond the request for the, for the letter of consistency, I didn't receive any other information.
And, and specifically dealing with what again? I'm sorry, I, I, I don't have any reference to this.
Okay, yeah, it's a, the grant monies will be used to, um, re-thread hydrants throughout the city. So bringing up to the national thread standard.
Okay, I'm familiar with thread standards. I am not familiar with the project at all. I thought it was going to be the Lake Onalani project, but okay. No, this is not one that I'm familiar with.
This is chairman, this is Will. And some, a few years ago, our, our, our late colleague, or Mehdi Raffielli, who had, uh, been a, a Reading firefighter, explained that Reading had its own thread standard, uh, for the hydrant and therefore for the, the hose nozzles. And, um, some, some other cities across America also have their own, their own standard like Reading has. Uh, but many have adopted the, uh, the national thread, uh, national standard thread. And, uh, the fire department is asking to do that and just was looking, they explained what they wanted. It was looking to see what was, what was the rationale behind it. You know, I could guess that it's, you know, maybe easier to find the, you know, parts instead of having to make ones that are specific, that, and it may be worth the money on balance to re-thread every hydrant, which is what this letter is, you know, requesting the funding for, as opposed to keeping it the way it is. And then they also requested, um, uh, adapters, right, for the nozzles. And I thought, well, if they're changing the thread, why would we need adapters? I'm presuming that during the project, there's something like two thousand hydrants in Reading and then the, and the suburban areas, which the Reading Area Water Authority serves as well, where these would have to be changed. And I'm presuming that they would need the, the adapters as sort of an intermediate uh, solution, but I wasn't clear as to why we would still need those. So I just wanted to understand the rationale because if they're asking for support for funding, they should, they should provide it. They, they explained what they wanted, but not really, like I say, the why, uh, to be requesting this amount of money. I have, I don't have any reason to object to it. I just think we should hear the, hear the rationale.
Yeah, it does seem a little strange because they want to re-thread the two inch, the, the, the two inch, but the four and a half inch they want adapters for, it's, it seems kind of weird. But, um, you know, I guess that's what their consultants thought would be best.
So they're just asking for a letter of support for the grant application? Yes, yeah, to a letter of consistency with, uh, basically the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, which we haven't had one of these in a while, but.
And the fire department's in favor. Uh, the letter states that the fire department is, is the agency requesting re-threading.
Yeah. And I think their rationale is that, is that.
The adapter. That's what the, that's what the letter states. Additionally, the fire department has requested that the store's adapters be installed.
Yeah. And it's, there seems to be a timing issue where they can't match things up sometimes when they hook up to, hook up to, uh, hydrants. So. So very good. Um, anything else on, on this? All right. Um, do I hear a motion to, to, um, do I hear a motion of approval for me to sign the grant, uh, the letter of consistency? Sure. Yeah, thank you, Peter. Second?
Second?
Okay, thank you, Nelson.
You're welcome.
Question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, close. Very good. I will sign the letter, uh, after we adjourn. Next, we have the review of the wireless communication ordinance amendment. Um, now for those of you, since we just received this at five o'clock. Basically, what this is, 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 um, there are, there's wording in here about, about setbacks that are very impractical for a city, uh, a city situation. And, um, and, uh, you know, I, I saw, I see no problem. I see no problem with it because, uh, you know, there are no changes about the use of stealth, um, stealth techniques and all of that stuff that, that, uh, we approved. Oh, my God, it must be at least ten years ago. So.
I, I've not seen this. Just non-towers, small.
Small towers. Um, the City of Reading co, uh, contracts and coordinates efforts with, uh, the co-anchor. Um, so law firm that write, wrote the wireless communication section of the zoning ordinance and they do updates periodically to keep everything current. Um, they do it for a number of municipalities, including City of Reading. So this, they had provided the City of Reading with the amendments that are going to be necessary, considering current technology, the small powers within the rights, rights of, like, things like that.
Well, that's small, small wireless facilities.
Yes, I think they, I think they were adopted on the last time they did this, but there are other, other provisions that they do periodic updates on. And, uh, relates to cell towers, on buildings. Yeah, this actually relates to those, um, the, the, the one that, that's, that's most noticeable is the one in front of Northwest Middle School. And what it is, is it's a, it's not really a tower. It's an attachment to the telephone pole.
It's, it's, you know, like, like.
Yeah, it's an antenna that gets attached to an existing structure or, or usually, usually a pole, um, an existing, existing telephone pole. So they really write these, the ordinances and a lot of them are, look very similar so that they do these periodic updates all on chat.
In addition to this, you might have on occasion box or something to support that.
Down the ground. Yeah. And as I said, that the whole thing about the stealth and how those boxes need to be positioned, none of that is being changed. It's just, just these, these really impractical eight hundred feet residential setbacks and five hundred feet residential setbacks. Because, you know, like the one in, in front of Northwest, in front of Northwest Middle School, you know, the setback is basically with the street, which is four, I guess forty feet right there, might be sixty feet. Certainly not.
You only are moving the setback that's to small wireless or non-tower, not to towers. I don't think that there are any towers in the city, but.
Yeah, there's some.
Okay.
Isn't there antenna clusters on buildings as well, or is? More than likely on the, on the county service building, yes. I'm thinking of like the old, the more modern ones. Yes. Yeah. And there might be some on the Madison because, um, there, there's standard, there's standard wireless antennas on, on the Madison, but there's probably some of these also.
Internet. They're all tied up because they're not towers. They're not freestanding.
Correct. Yeah, they're not, they're not freestanding like, oh, like the one in George Field. There, that's a freestanding one hundred twenty-five foot tower. Or the one, um, at, um, Jaeger Supply on North Sixth Street, which was modified to meet the complaints of the neighbors who lived across the street. was modified to meet the complaints of the neighbors who lived across the street.
So you just want to make sure you're not removing setbacks for towers.
Right, no, I don't think it is. Oh, yeah, and part twenty-one of the zoning ordinance is the one that has the provisions for the wireless communications, so it's its own segment of zoning. Well, interested in. Copy that, just read it. There was one sent out at five eighteen this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't I didn't have a chance to review it either, but I, you know, we we should look at it carefully.
I printed it out and ran over here, and that's.
I'm trying to look at it now, but it's it's a little technical. I'm trying to understand, you know, because we had, we had uh recommended the change several years ago. Um, and it's a little technical, so I mean, if this doesn't have to be considered tonight, it would be good if we had time to look it over and formulate any questions, appropriate it and everything as usual.
We do have the workshop session uh coming up on the uh the third Tuesday of January.
Oh, that would be great to do it, yeah. Yeah, that would be, that would be opportune.
We just want to make sure we advertise that for vote that they're gonna make recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's within your thirty days, because you have thirty days to review this, I just checked, that meeting's on seventeen.
Okay, cool, great. That was our big question. When when are they gonna, when is council gonna consider this, so?
Well, they legally cannot, if you and the county have thirty days.
Okay, cool. So we're just giving uh city council or.
What was the question, I'm sorry.
Oh, are we giving a recommendation to city council?
That's what you would be doing, yes.
So, yeah, so, okay, this this is great. We worked this out.
And if anyone listens to the county, they have thirty days.
And then also at that meeting, I will be going over the phase one changes.
Zoning and saldo amendments.
Of the zoning and saldo.
So there'll be roughly fourteen uh different segments of those ordinances that are going to be. They were deemed to be the highest priority. There's gonna be a phase two and a phase three. But these are the phase one amendments, like a major cleanup of various areas where we had concerns in the past and or areas that need, for example, the the Clearside Triangle component that's in the phase one.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad that's in there, Jerome, yeah, because I did find what we have done in the past. Because like you had said, that that one that for the variance that we had considered before, it refers back to the saldo, and then the saldo doesn't apply. So it's really, that's pretty defective. What we've done in the past is we referred back to the zoning ordinance instead of fifteen oh three to thirteen oh three B, which talks about the intersection of a private driveway in a street, and there the clean Clearside Triangle is ten feet. Now, it's a commercial driveway, but we still, we kind of bend the rules to make it work. It's it's in there, but it's a ten-foot triangle at at the intersection. And so, so Tom, I confused you with, I I think I confused Tom with referring to the zoning. It is in zoning. It's just, it's it's in a different section, thirteen oh three B. So, anyway, I'm glad you're clearing that up, because it 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 needs work. And um I don't, have you worded it yet for the Clearside Triangle?
Yes, it's uh in draft form. Uh, it's gonna be sent out to everyone um, lead Monday. Oh, hello.
Yes, because they can create that.
I'll I'll read it on Tuesday.
Is your is your Christmas present? Yeah, that's, it it's our, we're doing a cleanup right now, and it will be uh the final cleanup is scheduled on Thursday.
When when would you look for comments?
Uh, at that, at the workshop session.
Okay, later in January, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that that meeting is uh January seventeen.
Right.
And I'm going to, I I'm I'm also gonna recommend that we start to send that out to the the county as well, just to get their initial feedback. Um, it's probably give you a two-part review by them anyway, so uh might as well get their comments as well. All right, so yeah, we'll we'll take a look at that uh in more detail on the on the seventeen. And as I said, the the wireless communication facilities draft um was sent out at five eighteen this afternoon by Brandy. So they're ahead of our schedule on this, with the zoning and the saldo amendments. Yeah, so. But we'll, we'll take care of that. Great. Okay, next, we have number fourteen. Withdrawal of the medical arts land development application, and I'll let Jerome thank you, uh uh tell the details about about this, why this is on the agenda.
As you may recall, medical arts uh building was uh that they had a special exception application and zoning variance application to allow adaptive reuse to have thirty-some uh residential apartment units. As part of that project, they also envisioned that they were going to create or 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 propose a commercial building next to it, uh which was going to then come would come within close proximity to a neighboring building. Um, during the course of a review by uh Building and Trades, it was determined that there would be code violations or issues that would need to be resolved as part of the new building being located either uh right next to the the other building or the existing building. So therefore, the uh the applicant had determined, I'm gonna proceed with the annexation, I believe it was, of two twenty-six and two thirty uh north Fifth Street. Um, so the uh they annex those together, and they completed that portion of the plan. The other portion of the plan is the land development portion, and they uh are going to be eliminating the uh commercial building that was going to be next to, that was creating the code uh problem. We still would like the uh the applicant to proceed with the uh uh with the the medical arts component of it, because that would then just complete the implementation of what the zoning authority granted them as part of the that application. Um, so they're going to attempt to still resolve all those matters, but we reached out to Alan, saying, look, it might be best to still bring in the uh uh medical arts uh land development plan as just the building itself and not worry about the addition. So uh we have to wait to to hear from him, but he's going to be withdrawing the 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 plan, which has the complex uh from consideration. He's more than welcome to resubmit the uh medical arts building by itself again. It just won't have the commercial building. So he has withdrawn the plan. He's kind of, he's given us correspondence through like that.
Uh, but there's no a- action that we need to take.
You could acknowledge it. I don't wish to have a, but just the minutes.
Okay. Yeah, so we will, we will acknowledge the withdrawal in the minutes uh to, and uh that'll take care of that. Uh, as noted on the agenda, old business project updates and pending plans are included on the supplemental report. Uh, we don't need to review that. Um, now, we are up to plans requesting reaffirmation of approval. Uh, first, first, our list is the First Energy Stadium uh First Energy Stadium Plan. Uh, do you have any comments on this one, Jerome? No, um, yeah, I was surprised. I thought some of these were reported.
My recollection is we were not doing agreements because the city owns the property. If that's incorrect, let me know, and I'll be reciprocated.
That was my understanding too.
Yeah, that that was my understanding also. Um, yeah. Yeah, so uh, yeah, so I don't know why this hasn't been recorded, because they've already started building.
Yes.
I didn't see it on the county, Burke's County site where you.
If I were, I would have guessed that this one would have definitely been reported, and that I yeah, I was under the impression it was, but Brady did do the research to to verify, and it's not, yeah.
Have we signed it?
I haven't signed it.
Okay, so we need to reach out to them, make sure we're getting copies.
She did, and Brady did, and they acknowledged that they did record it.
Okay, I have a. Okay.
So the reaffirmation's been complete. Okay, great.
So we need this endorsed, signed and sealed plans.
Okay, so um with that, do I hear a motion to reaffirm approval of the First Energy Stadium Plan? Okay, thanks, Peter. Second?
I second.
Okay, thanks, Will. Then question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close? Next is uh Remcon Plastics at two eighteen Chestnut Street, and we know why this hasn't been recorded. It's a Ludwig project.
And I did reach out to them for the reaffirmation form, and Thomas went back, and he said that he's still waiting to hear back from the client and their attorney if they want to have the plan reaffirmed, so I don't have a reaffirmation assigned uh form for this.
Oh, okay, so we can skip this one, I think you can skip that one. Sure. Okay, next is the Sixth and Spring parking lot. As you heard Dan earlier, he is, has been working on this portion of the project. Uh, it is close. We do have the municipal improvements agreement, uh almost ready to go as far as the cost estimates. Um, we just need to complete the do both agreements, which would be the stormwater management agreement and the municipal improvements agreement for this project.
And I have a note to remind myself to circle back and make sure he has those.
Good, great. And related to this project, Tim, um what are all the markings on Spring Street? On my block, it says one fifteen, one hundred, one fifteen, one fifty, sixteen hundred.
Yep, yep, um, it's finally here. PennDOT is gonna do all the improvements on Spring Street. It's the SR twenty fourteen improvement project, so all these traffic signals, not so much your corner, Fifth Street, it's just some re-timing there, but but everything from Center Avenue and all the way east up to the high school, Thirteenth Street, there all the traffic signals are gonna either get you know, rebuilt or substantially improved to uh improve the safety of that whole corridor, which is really nice. That's Kinsley got the project, Kinsley Construction. And um her electric is doing a lot of the signal work itself. So you'll, we'll be seeing some excavation, maybe as early as the first week of January uh with the electric work. So those markings are PA one call markings for um the utility underground utilities.
Okay, because yeah, yeah, there's spray paint all over my sidewalk.
It'll go away. It's 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 temporary.
Yeah, no, I I certainly don't mind, but I was surprised when I walked out of my house, you know, every so many feet, there's a mark.
It's the mark of progress.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to reaffirm the uh Sixth and Spring parking? So, thank you, Nelson. Second? I'll second this one. Since I know the gentleman, he's been working a part on this for a long time. All those in favor of the motion, please say, please uh say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, very good. Next, we have uh five thirty-two, five thirty-three, and five thirty-four Minor Street. We were just, we originally were going to handle this as a uh in lieu of having a municipal improvements agreement, we were going to have the applicant agree to do the the project. Um, Public Works has been out and has determined that the sidewalk and sidewalk and curb um that will need to be replaced. The difference between a standard agreement versus this, for for example, is the the applicant is already occupying the site. They own it, and they're, uh, they just were bringing this like annexation plan slash land development together. Tim may know more about this project than I do, but it's my understanding is that the applicant wants to uh proceed with a standard municipal improvements agreement, which they have provided us with cost estimates, and it's a very minimal amount. Tim, do you have anything further?
I actually don't. I'd have to do a little more research on that, when I remember looking at it, uh but I didn't go back and see it. That's something Chris has been working on.
Yeah, he has been looking at at this, and that's, and that's what Dan is, had indicated to me today uh as well, and it, since the, we were going to attempt to have this as a condition of uh use and occupancy, but since they already own or own the property and they are occupied, the property is for that use, we can't hold them to that.
Right.
So uh I just brief Michelle on this quickly, so it looks like we're gonna have to do a standard municipal improvements here for a very small amount. Great. Do I hear a motion to uh reaffirm the land development plan for five thirty-two, five thirty-three, and five thirty-four Minor Street?
I'll have an emotion.
Okay, thank you, Will. Second? I'll second Alan. Question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Close? Next, we have the uh the plan for six fifteen, six nineteen Walnut Street. This is um uh, this is actually the county veterans building. Yes, and we've uh received some updates with this. Uh, we originally got some information that they were not going to proceed with the the project, and then we received information today saying they're going to proceed with the project. Is that what you got, Brandy?
Yes.
Um, so therefore, it's, we're just gonna reaffirm, okay, this plan. I was going to suggest that they bring the plan back and do a revised land development plan, but they're not changing it. Yeah, okay, great. They're keeping it the same. No. Very good. Uh, do I, do I hear a motion to reaffirm the land development plan for six fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, one, the street right here?
Don't move.
Okay. Okay, Peter and Nelson? Same thing with yours, sorry, the second? Okay, question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Very good. Next, we have um reaffirmation that the Scott Street subdivision at one thousand one Scott Street. This is one that they're kind of wishy-washy about. But I I'm surprised that this one's still on the list, but it is, uh, they still, they have to do municipal improvements on this project as well as stormwater management. So that was, that's what might be taking the time on this. Yeah.
Jerome, are are we, are we waiting to receive all that information, or or is there something with with Public Works or staff that needs to be acted on for them to proceed with that?
It's my understanding, we did, we did this last year.
Yeah, this this is an old one. I thought.
Several, several months ago.
Yeah.
So Michelle's going to resend it to them.
Hmm, so we're waiting for them to send us the completed agreements, so we can move forward with it. Yeah, yeah, okay, so it's, it's it's with them, yeah, okay.
All right, um, do I hear a motion to reaffirm the Scott Street subdivision at one thousand one Scott Street?
I'm moving.
Okay, thank you, Will. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Nelson. Question on the motion? Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close? Okay, very good. Okay, last one on the list here is MJ Ryder Associates at one oh three and one oh seven Angelica Street. And just when you think that they are all the same, they're not. Um this project was uh proved as an annexation plan. As well as a land development plan, the sidewalks and. Driveway prints and curves uh were modified slightly, which triggered the. Municipal improvements agreement, we tried to do this under a. A minor improvements project as well, they did get grant applicant, or they didn't get grant approval for certain improvements. And I thought that this plan might have been through the, through it as well, Tim, do you have any further on this?
I thought they were already ready to go, I'm surprised it's on the list.
That's what I was, um but. Yeah, this was, this was something that this would have qualified for a simple project as well, we could not do it as part of a uh. Hold the plan until uh, or to hold the use and occupancy permit until the site improvements were completed because they are the owners of the property. And they do occupy it as MJ Ryder. So it's, so G and D are the same, yeah, yeah. Alright, um, do I hear a motion to reaffirm the MJ Ryder Associates, Associates plan at one oh three to one oh. And one oh seven Angelica Street? Sure, thank you Peter, second? I'll second that. I know it's getting late, the uh. All those, uh question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close? Okay. Now, as we uh discussed earlier, we have two, two active plans that are requiring time extensions.
Mr. Chairman, since the agenda indicated on this time, you should do a motion to amend the agenda to include consideration of time extension on those two plans.
Okay, so at this time, we will uh ask for a motion to amend the agenda to. To include time extensions for the um. Holy Trinity Church of God Land Development Plan and for the Reading Park and Authority. Land Development Plan at six twenty-five McKnight Street, do I hear a motion to amend? Thank you Peter, second, thank you Nelson? Question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay. Now, uh now we'll go to um. Uh do I hear a motion to accept the time extension for the Holy, Holy Trinity Church of God Land Development Plan?
I'll move the extension.
Okay, Peter first and Will for a second?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, are those ninety day extensions?
Oh, uh yes, this is a ninety day extension.
I know, um.
One said sixty.
Sixty-five is, is definitely.
Okay. Because yeah, but Holy Trinity, they said sixty.
It's the attached form, I believe it has ninety days in the state.
One of them's sixty, I think Holy Trinity was sixty.
Uh remember, we're meeting a week, a week early, so.
So that's, so so that, okay, yeah, so that's maybe.
Okay, so yeah, this is a ninety day time extension. Holy Trinity was sixty, right?
Well, until February, until February twenty-fourth, so.
Were at that meeting?
No, we don't get to February twenty-eight. So we'll have to do it.
We'll have to do another one in January, okay, very good. Alright, um. It's here, okay, uh we did the question, so um. All those in favor of the, of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Close? Alright, okay, and last uh, the second one here is the. Time extension for the Reading Park and Authority Land Development Plan at six twenty-five McKnight Street. Uh do I hear a, a motion?
Some move.
Okay, Nelson, second? Okay, Peter? Okay, the um. Uh question on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close? Very good, alright, uh do we have any announcements? I can't think of anything, so um. And um, I wasn't at the last greenhouse committee meeting, so I don't have a report. Uh let's see here, next we have. Approval of planning commission minutes from November first. I submitted some very, very minor. Dramatical issues to Brandy, but there was nothing of substance. Does anyone else have uh any corrections?
I, I'm still behind reviewing minutes, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, no problem, if there is anything. Alright, uh so uh do I hear a motion to approve the, the planning commission minutes for the meeting of November first, twenty twenty-two? And uh since I reviewed them, I'll, I'll make that motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you Will? Question on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close? Very good, and we did not receive the minutes for the twenty-second yet, Brandy's still working on it, but. We'll get them next month. And as I told Brandy, I know exactly what it, what.
Tell me about it.
What, well, how, how difficult minutes can be, so, we, we have, we have no, no problem. With that, uh next planning commission meeting uh will be our workshop on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Since we will be considering. Zoning amendments, uh we may, we may have to have a vote. But since this is only stamped, um, you know. And no, nobody else, we will have to re-advertise it, but at least.
We need to advertise it, yeah.
No, does your office re-advertise, advertise at the beginning of the year?
You need to check with Linda Calathaus, she specifically, if she does not re-will, but she typically does all the meetings, official meetings.
Okay.
Check with Linda.
See, might as well do the seventeenth this.
As a voting, as a voting? Yeah, so that we can get those, we can get those things out of the way.
And just said, there might be another plan that, that comes in too, that, cause it's now, we're now five weeks away.
Yeah, right, and then we can, we can do the plan and then let them go and. Then we can, we can do the, we can do the ordinances, yeah, that, that sounds like a plan. Because uh, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that'll be great. Because sometimes. Sometimes getting to the nitty gritty of these uh zoning amendments can be difficult. And then the next regular meeting is January twenty-fourth. Um and of course, both of these will be hybrid. I will. I did. Received a message from Frank Dombowski. Um he has a very good reason why he was not here today. I had an unexpected minor blood transfusion today and I just woke up, my sincere apologies. Uh so. And uh. And then uh he would like to speak to, speak to me privately, but we wish uh, we wish Frank all the best. Of course, and I will, Frank lives around the corner from me, so I can, I can easily talk to him. Okay, so, wow, other one. With that, uh is there anything for the good of the order? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yeah, second?
Second.
Thank you Will? All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close? Very good, we are adjourned. Uh can you stick on for a minute, Tim, I have a question for you.
Sure, no problem. Alright, happy holidays, everybody. Happy holidays.
Okay, thank you Nelson.
You bet.